All right, Council, it is seven o'clock. It is seven o'clock on November the 25th of a special meeting that has been called. I will please ask for everyone to stand for the pleasure of allegiance as I call this meeting to order.
Your allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so very much. So we're going to start off our meeting by opening it up for citizen comments. I noticed that we have at least thirty-eight attendees. For all the attendees who are listening. Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez, oh, go ahead. Sorry about that. Martinez, could you go ahead and do the roll call, please?
Holly, I'm sorry to interrupt. Liz is on the attendee list. If you want to promote her over to panelist.
Oh, I see.
Somehow she got on the attendee list. Sorry to interrupt, Council.
Oh, no, thank you. No problem.
And then after roll call, you may want to just approve the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
With the addition of a public input item.
Okay, are you ready for me to call the roll now?
Yes, if you can. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Be Hill?
Here.
Counselor Daniel?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Present.
Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Carson?
Present.
Counselor Henley?
Here.
All counselors present in the quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Martinez. Now, if we can have someone, Counselor Be Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just when we get into this. When people give their counsel, their citizen comment, can we make sure that we get everybody about where they live? For the record, please.
Okay. Well.
Do we want to approve the agenda?
Yes, Council Rose, would you go ahead and make that motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as stated.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, we need to add that there will be public comment on the agenda because that's not on the current agenda.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. So we have a motion, a second, any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, all right, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Henley?
Yes.
And Counselor Be Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we have several attendees who would probably like to speak during our open comment section of the agenda. This is the part of the agenda where we allow citizens to make comments. We ask that you state your name and where you live. And we also ask that you keep your comments below within the three-minute limit that we have. If you are still talking, when the timer goes off in the three minutes, I will ask you to end the conversation so that we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak tonight. It looks like we have at least forty-one attendees. And as long as you have your hands raised, I will be able to recognize you and make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. And also remember that you only get to speak once. So, Ms. Martinez, will you please give instructions to all of the attendees and let them know how to raise their hands so that we could recognize them? Now, once the last person speaks and once we close the citizen comment section, we will not reopen this part of the agenda and we will not be going back and forth in regards to conversations during the citizen comment stage as well. I just want all of the participants to know that this is not like a conversation where we're going to be talking back and forth. We're here to just hear your comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
Okay, so if you are on the Zoom app, in order to speak, you need to raise your hand. There's a raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Go ahead and click that right now and it'll let me see that you raised your hand. Looks like we have a couple phone-in call-in listeners. If you want to speak to raise your hand, dial star nine.
So at this time, I only see a, okay. So please make sure your hands are raised so I can recognize you. Because once we get to the end and we close this section, we're not coming back, okay? So make sure you have your hands raised so we can see that. Okay, Ms. Martinez, can you take the first person, please?
Yes, sir. The first person I have with their hand raised is Bradley Heredia.
Okay. Can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Good evening, guys and gals. I'm just commenting because I was reading the, your guys' article that was, that came out, right? On your agenda tonight. And we went to red. I don't understand why we went to red, for starters. Because we're going with the numbers of the county that are sick, which according to the numbers, it's like one forty-five. And I did some math and either I'm wrong, but we're at point. And remember that point eight-seven percent that are sick from the county in general. Now, if we would say the city, it would be one point five if you use those numbers. Now, I understand the concern. I understand what we're trying to do, but also we were talking about, last time we were talking about. I mean, I'll go back to when Counsel Carson brought up a gentleman and said he was concerned and he was taking him food. I'm assuming I'm talking to the, I remember, right? That was the conversation. And, you know, and people got the right to be scared. I'll be honest with you, I've had COVID, I'm coming on the record. And I, and I, and I know what it feels like. Now, on top of that, what I'm trying to get to is you, you guys brought this, the, about the penalties. Last time we didn't get on, I heard the whole thing. I didn't get on. I wanted to see where the people were and how you guys were going to approach that of enforcement. Now, as far as I see, people are still trying. I was on here the last time. I didn't, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't understand how we ended up in red with that point eight-seven. If my math might be off a little, but at the same time, we're trying to, you guys are going to have a meeting on enforcement. Now, last time I mentioned that, do you trust the people? Or is it just because, you know, last time it came on trespassing, et cetera, et cetera? We all understand where, if anybody that was on this meeting last time over these conversations. But I'm pleading that you guys, you know, they're closing down the restaurants. Here we go again, for a point eight. Unless I'm wrong. And, but according to the numbers, I'm seeing that, no, and I'm using the science. I'm not using by, by anything else. Now, on top of that, I know that if somebody had come on record saying that, they would say that this is all COVID because we're in flu season. And according to the science, some of this.
Heredia, you've reached your three-minute mark. Thank you so very much. And we're going to move on down to the next person so we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It looks like I have Ms. Martinez. I have Ms. Amanda Pearson.
Count, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a comment real quick before we move forward?
Counselor.
Just a clarification?
Only a clarification, sir, yes.
For everybody on the phone and listening on the Zoom meeting, I'm not necessarily speaking for all council, but I'd like to say this. We have no control over the dial that the state has us in. Keep that in mind. As a city council, we don't control that. All we can control is the reaction we have tonight here. So when you're making your comments and thinking about the time you're going to spend, don't spend time blaming us for what the state has done, please. I'm not, I'm not trying to cast anything, just, we have no control over that. So think about what council can do. And when you're, when you're making your comments, be mindful and thoughtful about that and the approach that, that you can use to give us advice to help you guys do what you want. Because it would be better well-spent time like that than ranting at us about what the state is doing.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. So thank you so very much. And that would be the last comments we're going to have from council as we want to make sure that we give all the attendees an opportunity to speak, okay, council? So let's move on to the next person. Ms. Amanda Pearson, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. We can.
Thank you, Council. Amanda Pearson, fifty-four Cascade Avenue, Alamosa. I just want to say that there's times in leadership where there are right answers and times where there might clearly be the best answer and there are times when there are no easy answers. And I'm speaking tonight because in my life I have had to make difficult decisions where none of the paths are satisfactory to me. In those times, I have to look at my values. I have to look at my priorities and use those to act as a compass in navigating the way. This is tough when, enough when it's just me making the decision. But when I'm part of a group, a body that must work to benefit the whole, I start to realize that not everybody has the same priorities as me. Not everybody follows the same values. We voted for you to make these decisions and I think, well, none of you knew that this would be the state of the world when you ran for office. Have confidence in your ability to make the difficult decisions. The question is, where were you, will, where will you err? Because it is likely that you will. None of us have a magic ball, crystal ball. There are urban solutions for rural communities that really don't work for us. And I think that may be the conversation that you need to have tonight is we have the ability to be in community much more than a city. We have the ability to talk to one another. I would ask that if you craft one of those solutions, that you be leaders, that you listen to the scientific experts, that you tell your community the dangers, that you're honest about the dangers and that whatever you decide may or may not save your local economy. It may or may not keep our vulnerable from death door or keep the hospital from collapsing. We just need you to be honest with your citizens and that's what I would ask of you tonight.
Thank you very much. Up next, Ms. Martinez, I see Cal Woodward. Mr. Woodward, you're muted. There you go.
Good evening. I know that a lot of this meeting is, is based on enforcement of code red and how you guys are going to use it after the commissioners voted the way that they did on Friday. So as a business owner and more in particular a restaurant owner, as it seems to be that there's restaurants are taking the brunt of this code red. I'm just asking you guys, the city and whoever's making the decisions on enforcement, to view our community comprehensively, view its overall economic, mental, physical, emotional and spiritual health by keeping these businesses open. We've proven throughout the duration of COVID, when I say we, I'm talking restaurants, we've proven that that there's no small businesses, local restaurants, and even gyms are not a significant source of transmission. We had a strong summer, but about fifty percent of our business relies on catering. So we lost all of our catering sales throughout the summer. Now we're going into winter time and we're shut down again. I don't know that, I don't know how we can survive. I don't know how really any restaurants can survive this round of shutdowns. We've proven that we're able to keep people safe throughout the duration of COVID. In fact, as a restaurant owner, one of our main jobs is to keep people safe and that doesn't just mean COVID. We're all certified in food safety and keeping the public safe. So I would encourage you guys, you know, before you make any kind of decisions on enforcement, think about our employees, think about our livelihoods. Think about if you would come into my restaurant and tell my thirteen employees that they no longer have a job. Please take all that into consideration, especially during the holidays. We can't be shut down in the valley. Winter time is tough enough to survive in the San Luis Valley. And now with not having any kind of capacity in our restaurants whatsoever, I'm going to find it nearly impossible to get through this. I don't know how we'll do it. And, you know, my, my business is set up more for catering and takeout. I mean, I'm sorry. My business is set up more for takeout and carryout than a lot of businesses are. And I truly feel bad for those businesses that are not set up for that. So before you make a decision on enforcement, just keep in the back of your mind, if you would like to be one of the people that come into my restaurant or any restaurant in town and tell the employees that they no longer have a job or that they're getting laid off before Christmas because of reasons that honestly are unbeknownst to me. I know that COVID is a thing. I know that, you know, we all know that. We all know COVID is real. We all know it's caused a lot of sickness. But look at the survival rate. Look how many people get through it as opposed to, to the mortality rate. There's a significant difference.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodward. Okay, that brings us up next to Luke Yoder.
Hi, folks. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's great to see you all tonight. Glad you can't see me. I don't look as sharp as you all sitting here in my pajamas. But I want to appreciate the opportunity again to have this conversation. I think it is obviously like Amanda said, what you all are tasked with doing is, is taking information in, hearing from all the involved parties and making the best and most informed decisions. And so thank you for taking the time to really listen to folks and wrestle with this. I also appreciate having the opportunity to kind of piggyback on some of what Kyle was saying and really want to agree with a lot of what I heard him saying in that I think we as a community have, I think, three priorities on this. One is that we want to make sure that people stay healthy and safe. And that's certainly something that I think we all want. I think we can all agree on as a value. We also want to make sure our businesses succeed. And I think that's something I heard Kyle saying really clearly, that restaurants in particular are in a really difficult spot. And I realized that I didn't say where I'm from. I live at one oh-nine Poncha in Alamosa. I'm involved in, in leading a nonprofit here in town, but also a restaurant owner at the Windsor Hotel in Del Norte. And so I understand exactly what he's voicing in terms of we want these businesses to succeed and we have been hammered here over the last six months. And the last thing that I think is really important is that we want to come out of this together as a community. I think there is so much us and them that's happening right now. There's so much, everybody's trying to play doctor and diagnose things and figure out what the right things to do are. And we're blaming each other for a lot of stuff and attacking each other for a lot of stuff. And I want us to find ways to acknowledge that we're in this together. We got to figure out how to navigate this together and we got to respect each other and look out for each other. So with those things said, I really hope that we can find ways to listen to experts. We know that there's reasons that the dial exists as it does. I'm not saying it's infallible. I think like Amanda said, there, we don't want to apply urban solutions to rural problems. I think we need to be really cognizant of that, but there are reasons why they look at certain numbers to do certain things. And so I want us to listen to experts as a community. I think that's really critical. I also think it's critical that we need businesses to really rise up and restaurants in particular, to Kyle's point, restaurants, we're going to take the brunt of this. And if we can demonstrate that we can rise to the challenge, that means doing all the little things. It means wearing masks and enforcing that in our restaurants. It means making sure that there's physical distancing when people are in our restaurants. And if folks aren't abiding by those standards, we need to ask them to leave. If they aren't wearing a shirt, we do the same thing, right? We can do this as business owners. Trust us to do that. And then the third thing is we need the city, I think, to support business owners by doing what it can in terms of enforcement and also with working with the county and the state to say, hey, look, this may not be applicable to us. Maybe we can stay in orange because we trust our businesses. But then our businesses and citizens have to rise up and do the right thing. And if we don't, then that's where I think enforcement does need to happen. If people aren't masking, people aren't following protocol, then you all need to step in, but I think we can do it together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Yoder. Thank you for your comments. Okay, up next, Ms. Martinez, I see. Is it Ned Herrera? Okay, so Ned, can you unmute yourself? Okay, Ned.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Ned Herrera and I'm here from Alamosa, Colorado, and I'm a business owner as well. I own the All Valley Cafe. And like Kyle was saying, we're all just suffering through this as it is. I mean, I mean, it's been rough. I know it's not the city's fault. I know it's not your guys' fault for what's going on, but please hear us out and hope that we can at least keep our employees here. We had, I had to lay off four people and that's pretty rough on a business. You know, to look someone in the eye and tell them, I'm sorry, I can't have you here because this is under, out of our control. We have no control over this. And, you know, and it's even rougher when the state starts putting pressure on us, sending us letters that we're going to, you know, revoke your license or find you. And we're trying to follow the rules, man. No one's opening up. No one's going against the rules. We're trying to follow the laws of the land and we just want an opportunity to stay open, just like any other business is getting right now. Even if it's at twenty-five percent capacity, fifty percent capacity, any kind of capacity would do us good. So keep that in mind as we enforce these rules and know that livelihoods have been lost. And it's, it's hard. It's a, it's a hard thing for, for a business owner to look an employee in the eye and tell them that they don't have a job no more. I appreciate you guys listening to us tonight and I hope that you think of us as as people struggling with this as well. And we want to do the right thing and we just thank you.
Thank you very much, Ned, for your comments. Up next, Ms. Martinez, the name is Ruthie. Okay, Ruthie, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, well, thank you for, oh, you guys have a terrible job, but, but so do all of us as business people. And I just, I just want to say it's got to be so hard to be a restaurant, a brewery, a swimming pool, a beauty parlor, barber shop. All they want to do is survive. And, and of course, there's different, differentiating opinions on the virus. You know, just today I had a friend who was confirmed with COVID a few weeks ago and quarantined. And, you know, then she goes in for an antibody test and there's no antibodies. So did she have it? Did she, I don't know. None of us know. But I like to think I should be able to have personal responsibility as to whether I want to go to Woody's Q Shack or the brewery or the All Valley Cafe or the swimming pool or the Mosca Hooper Sandusages Recreation. Someplace we have to have, let people be responsible and if, if I don't feel safe, if I, if I'm scared, then, then maybe I should stay home. You know, you all know I have a store. I don't, I don't wear a mask. I have a terrible time with the mask. And in my private business, I don't require them. But that doesn't mean I'm not respectful of people who do wear them and I'm willing to put them on. But the whole shutting down a restaurant or businesses, we, we just can't do it. We, who can stay in business? My, my heart, I cry. I cry for them and, and I've eaten out or to-go orders every night and, and want to go sit with some friends. And so where do we have to go? Well, we're taking it out of Alamosa County and we're going to Del Norte. Which is good, which is good, but I, restaurants and all those places should be able to stay open. And I, I would, I would vote for fifty percent. And, and honestly, that's not even enough. They should just be able to be open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruthie. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez? The next person that I show on the list, it says Batista.
Yes, this is Donnie Batista, Alamosa, Colorado.
Okay, go ahead, Donnie.
Sir, I'm going to do the same as Mr. Yoder and Mr. Woodward, as well as Ms. Brown and just piggyback on what they said. You know, throughout the history of this country, there's been times when, when agendas have been pushed and when they have been pushed, some great things have come out of it. You know, we're not asking, you know, to be fully open. And I have lots of friends that are business owners and, you know, I've been impacted this year with this. And they are operating safe. You know, I, I frequent their restaurants and I try to help keep them alive. And I've been doing so, you know, since the dining rooms closed the first time and the second time around. And, you know, I assure you that the proximity that you're sitting, you know, with someone or away from someone in these restaurants is they're doing the six feet. And there, people are wearing masks going into these places and taking them off when they sit down like they've been asked to do. And the proximity that I see myself in, in these restaurants versus, you know, the contact I make with people, you know, in a grocery store aisle, I assure you that I'm closer to those people than I am to anyone sitting down in a restaurant. Now, we've been suffering this year. We're, you know, not asking you to condone us wanting to stay open against the orders of the governor. But I don't want you to also come down on us and support us by saying our constituents are all in favor of continuing to operate the way we have in a safe manner. And, and we just want your support, you know? And we want you to request, you know, Governor Polis to actually talk to our elected officials rather than just mandate things and, you know, let them hear you out in your voice, you know? And our voices are heard through yours. And, you know, please just, just vote tonight on not, you know, abiding by these restrictions at this time until you're able to have a conversation with, you know, someone from the state to let them know, you know, we still think we're operating safely. We're okay and we're going to support these small businesses. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, Mr. Batista, for your comments. Okay. Up next, we have Jack Burris. And this is just a reminder, if you could state your name and state where you live as well for the records.
Oh, yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. My name is Jake Burris. I live on two oh-six Shadowwood Drive here in Alamosa. First, let me say that I really appreciate all your efforts. I, I know where you are right now. It's a late night. You're several comments into this meeting already. I know how that is and it's exhausting. So I'll be brief. I appreciate what Councilman Carson said. Thank you for, for giving the clarity there. I understand the leverage the state has on you. And the state has leverage on all these businesses here as well and that they endorse their licenses to operate. I think people do need to understand that you are not making the decision to implement what the state of Colorado is trying to force these businesses to do. However, the control you do have is whether or not you act as a police force for the state of Colorado. And what I would implore you to do is not take the individual choice away from the citizens and not take that individual responsibility away from each business. Let the business people decide if they're ready to challenge the state on their license and allow individuals, as in me, as in regular citizens here, whether or not they want to be out in public and go to these businesses. The mayor of Denver, who has done nothing but preach to us all for the last month, is on a plane right now, headed to Houston, after he told everybody not to travel. So I would simply ask, the best thing you can do is nothing. That's what we're requesting. We know you have no control over the stay-at-home orders. But please do not be a police force for the state of Colorado. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burris. Thank you for your comment. Okay. Ms. Martinez, looks like the next person is Scott White.
Hi there. My name is Scott White. I live at 1770 Ross Avenue here in Alamosa. I have a couple of questions and a couple of points to make. One being, I heard earlier that there's a difference of opinion on the virus. There's no difference of opinion on the virus. There's the medical fact, but there's a difference of opinion on how people react to the virus. It's not a difference of opinion on the virus. We know it's there. We know it's deadly for some, not as deadly for others. We have to mitigate our risks individually, as many people have said. But we also have a social responsibility as a community, as a city, as a city council, to help the community mitigate those risks as much as possible and avoid those costs of sickness, death, lingering effects of COVID, because we don't know what those are. We, you know, those are, those are still unknowns. And looking at personal responsibility, we all have those. We have our personal responsibility to keep ourselves safe, to use the, the functions or the, the, the niceties of curbside pickup and all those things that we can do to keep ourselves safe. But what we're, what we're seeing is what we've been doing has not worked. We're seeing, we're seeing a spike. And, you know, we were all doing what we thought is our personal, you know, best to do what we were gonna do. And it's not working. And so that's, you know, we all know that's why the state has issued the red warning. Um, and yes, it's scary. But, you know, saying, oh, well, those that, that are scared should just stay home is not an answer. Not everybody can just stay home if they don't want to go out and don't want to, you know, be around others that, that could possibly be carrying the virus asymptomatic. And, yes, I want my restaurants open. I like to eat out. I love to eat out in this town. And, and it's, it's hard. I, you know, I, where do I go now? I have to bring it home. And that, that's not the same experience. And so, but I also look at the, when I've gone into restaurants in the past, where I see restaurant workers with their masks down around their necks or around their chin. And are you going to the grocery store? And they aren't enforcing their own store policies. You go into restaurants, people are walking through the restaurant without a mask. And they're not being asked to, to abide by the policies that are advertised on the doors. So what we're doing is not working. We need restaurants, business owners, everybody to step up and say, if you're not wearing a mask, you gotta go. Or, you know.
Thank you so very much, Scott. We have come to the end of your time. We'll go ahead to the next person listed is Aaron Kek.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome. Aaron Kek, 3019 West Lakewood Drive, Alamosa. I'm also the director of the Alamosa Chamber. Thank you all for letting me speak today and for hosting this special meeting. Now, we're heading to the holidays, so I truly appreciate you all giving this time. I prepared some comments tonight on behalf of our business community, particularly those affected by the state's decision to move to Level Red. I want to point out that I do take COVID seriously. And I believe that we should all be taking personal responsibility to protect those around us. But I do have concerns about the inconsistencies and the restrictions that the state's implementing. We have to think long-term. And it's becoming increasingly recognized that this virus will likely be something that we deal with forever, at least to some degree. It's not sustainable to continue going in circles, shutting everything down over and over. So we need a long-term plan that balances the benefits with the costs. While I feel that we need to be conscious and adapt our behaviors on an individual level, these restrictions that the state's imposing are arbitrary at best. So does it make sense to enforce rules that don't make sense? Under Level Red, I can attend an outdoor seated event with 75 other people and wait in line with dozens of others for 45 minutes at Walmart. But I can't attend personal gatherings of any size or dine indoors with my family. So outdoor dining is now safe. But earlier, we weren't permitted by the state to have outside dining. So our restaurants lost out on valuable revenue. And now they're being targeted again. Not to mention the impacts, the restrictions on other businesses heading into Black Friday and Small Business Saturday, which we all know is critical for business survival. So it appears that we're still guessing on what actually has an impact at stopping the virus from spreading. But we do know that there's some very negative consequences to specific businesses and business owners. With the new restrictions, we have now a new wave of residents that are gonna be facing unemployment heading into the holidays. And given that there are so many unknowns, we should have some individual freedoms and the choice to weigh what each of us feel comfortable with. The state didn't even bother consulting us before moving Alamosa to Red. But that aside, our businesses and by extension, our entire community may look very different six months or a year from now if we continue down this road. Our police force is already dealing with enough. And for all the reasons I mentioned, I just don't believe that policing Thanksgiving dinners, Christmas shopping, or the occasional family meal should be a top priority. We should have clear communication to our community on where we stand in terms of resources. And we should strongly encourage the behaviors that help limit the spread. However, those behaviors should not be orders or the responsibility of our community to enforce. Again, we have to think long-term and do what we can to ensure the survival of our community as a whole. Our businesses are the foundation of our community and we need them. And right now, they're looking to us as leaders to help and support them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Erin. Thank you very much. Okay, so I noticed that we have these attendees on here. So this will be the last time I get, I have Ms. Martinez give instructions of how to raise hands. After we allow the remaining hands that are raised, after Ms. Martinez gives the instructions, we will close the citizen comment and bring it back to council and staff. So, Ms. Martinez, will you please give one final round of instructions to all of the attendees of how to raise their hand or how to unmute their cellphone if they're calling in from their cellphone so that we can make sure that we give all of the remaining people who have not spoken yet an opportunity to make their comments?
If you're on the Zoom app, there is a raise your hand feature in the bottom of the screen. You can click that and I'll raise your hand. If you are calling in on the telephone to raise your hand, you can dial star nine. And then if you need to unmute yourself, if you're on the phone, dial star six.
At this, this is the time to raise your hand so that I can recognize you. After the last person speaks, who, who I see hand is raised, I will close the citizen comment and we will not reopen the citizen comment section. So please raise your hands now, because once I get to the last person, I will close this portion of the agenda. Okay, it looks like I have Cedric next. Okay, Cedric.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Cedric Huber, 409 13th Street. So I just got a couple of things to say. First of all, I'm super disappointed in America that we are actually having this discussion. I'm an immigrant and the US used to be number one for everything. The world used to look up to the US for everything. World War I, World War II, economics, you guys were number one. The only thing you're number one at now is deaths with 262,000 during this pandemic. To put it in perspective, 405,000 soldiers lost their lives in World War II. So we're almost nearing that just because people don't want to be inconvenienced in doing something. If you were born in 1900, by the time you were 14, it was World War I raging. When you were 20, there was the Spanish Flu. When it was, when you were 29, the economy collapsed. By 20, by 33, the Nazis came to power. 39, World War II. When you were 45, 60 million people died. 6 million Jews got exterminated. When you were 52, the Korean War begins. When you were 64, Vietnam War began. And it ended when you were 75. So I don't get it, what the problem is with us having to wear a mask, social distance to try to beat this. Yes, it is an inconvenience. Yes, we have to adapt, to overcome. But America has always done that. And as an immigrant, I can't believe that America is failing to do this with this somewhat simple thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cedric. Thank you for your comment. Okay, up next, I see Justin as the next person.
Hey, this is Justin Johnson, owner of SLV Sports and Wellness, resident of Alamosa. Pretty much just reiterating a lot of what's been said tonight. This isn't new anymore. This began in March. Business owners have modified operations to keep our customers safe. You know, we've, we've stepped up and done what we need to so we can operate in a safe manner and continue to try and produce income during this time. Us, for example, we've always prided ourselves on our cleanliness. And due to this, we've ramped up our, our cleaning efforts even further. We started using new products that have a 30-second dwell time to kill the virus. We've established at-risk times for people that have compromised immune systems, et cetera. So business owners are doing our best to keep our customers safe and to still be able to operate. So I ask that you keep that in mind when making your decision tonight. Once again, this is not new. We've been dealing with it since March. That being said, there has to be a level of personal responsibility for this. By now, everybody knows the risks. If you have a compromised immune system, if you have, you are at risk, then yeah, you need to be careful. You should stay home. You should take advantage of curbside delivery. You should do some of this other stuff. If you're a young, healthy individual, you should have the right to choose whether or not you want to go and go get a workout in, go get a meal inside a dining room. This personal responsibility has to be part of this. And your guys' decision on how to enforce Level Red, it, it has possibly very detrimental effects to a lot of businesses in our little town. So please just keep that in mind when you're deciding how to proceed. I do appreciate the horrible decisions you guys are having to make. And I thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you for your comment. Okay, Ms. Martinez, the next person I see listed is Bob Rice. Bob, can you unmute yourself, please?
Okay, my name is Bob Rice. I'm from 230 Shadowwood in Alamosa. I'm a retired physician. I know we've talked about a lot of personal responsibility and the freedom to do things we want to do. But at certain time, I think the recommendations from Dr. Polis actually are based on good science. The science lately has shown that a good number of the, a good amount of the transmission of the virus comes from bars and restaurants. If you have the virus, today, it's a fairly good predictor, you went out to eat in the last two or three weeks. That's just, that's just how the stats work out. And I think that what we don't realize is the chain of events that could happen. For instance, I'm young and healthy. I want to go out, I want to work out, I want to go to the restaurant, I want to stay out at the bar. I go home, I see my girlfriend. My girlfriend has a mom and her husband that is a nurse at the oncology center. And all of a sudden, you have an asymptomatic nurse at the oncology center taking care of a, of immunocompromised patient. And I think that we don't really think ahead about the chain of events that occurs with this. I think the shutdown of, or the drawback of, with, with the severe spike we're experiencing, the drawback of not being able to go in and sit down and eat for a period of time is far outweighed by the safety issues. We've seen 252,000 deaths. If our, if our current rate of deaths goes on, we could easily be looking at 400,000, 500,000. Even some models have predicted approaching a million. And that's, that's a lot more deaths than when World War II. So the magnitude of the problem, I think, is not really appreciated at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Martinez, the next person I see with their hands raised is Mark Martinez.
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Mark Martinez, I live at 19 Alamosa Avenue. And I'm co-owner of Square Peg Brew Works, a brewery in downtown Alamosa. And I'd like to again kind of reiterate some of the points that have been, that have been made previously on the kind of small business crisis that I think we're gonna see in Alamosa and the surrounding counties, should this continue? You know, to give a nod to Mr. Rice's comments as well as Cedric's comments earlier, I do appreciate those comments. And I appreciate the magnitude and risk of transmission. But I do also appreciate the mitigation factors that are already in place for many healthcare workers or those who worked with, or have close contact with immunocompromised people. And also just that at-risk segment of the community, that demographic. I think businesses have done a pretty good job of shifting how they operate to accommodate for that curbside pickup. And I can definitely appreciate businesses for doing that. But at some point, restrictions become draconian. And they start putting that undue burden on certain segments of the economy. So yes, I can appreciate that your risk of catching COVID at a restaurant may be higher than staying home entirely. But what are your risks in living in, you know, any other aspect of life to include, you know, going to the grocery store for groceries? I think Aaron Kek commented on standing in line at Walmart. You know, we're allowed to do that still with, you know, social distancing and stuff. But you're still picking up those groceries and maybe you're putting those groceries back down. And someone else is gonna pick those groceries up. And they're gonna maybe purchase them and take them into their home. So that point transmission gets transferred all that person, that person eating it, I guess. The undue burden placed on bars and restaurants is unfair. And we're having to bear the brunt of it in my mind because we are all licensed businesses. And it's much easier to put the crackdown on a business that has a state license. And the threat of getting that license revoked is very real for a business. And I would say that it's an undue burden, really. I think it's an undue burden. There was a recent study that came out citing that.
Mark, you reached your three minutes, sir. Thank you so very much for your comments. We're gonna have to move on to the next person.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Ms. Martinez, looks like we have Jamie Snow. Jamie, can you unmute yourself, please? Okay. Okay. Jamie? We can't hear you, Jamie. You're not muted, but we can't hear you. So what I am going to do is I'm going to go to the next person and we'll come back to you after this person speaks, Jamie. But you are unmuted and we can't hear you at this moment, okay? All right, the next person I show is Wendy.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman, and thank you, City Council, for really listening to the community. It really means a lot to have an opportunity to just kind of express, you know, how this is really impacting us. And so I appreciate that. I want to first address the position that was just on just a few things regarding the studies he was discussing as far as restaurant transmissions. When he stated that recent research is stating that if you have COVID, the chances are you've been to a restaurant in the past three weeks. So some of that studies, they're flawed because the average American eats out five, almost six times a week. And so the fact that someone had been to a restaurant in the past three weeks. So this is not, definitely not conclusive evidence that, you know, that this is really spiking in restaurants. And, you know, what they are finding is that it's community spread, you know, individuals in their home more so. And then I do just want to underscore that I think Justin talked about all they are doing at the gym. I mean, our place smells like, you know, disinfectant half the time. I mean, we really do put a lot of effort into cleaning. That's always been important to us, but definitely with this, it has become more vital and we have really met the criteria and beyond and we're happy to do so. I want to point out now, when I say this, I'll probably get some sort of complaint, but we have been open since March, since all of this, and we have not gotten one single call from the health department that someone has complained about our business not following protocol. Not one time. And, and I'm not, you know, bragging in that way, but more just to say that I know I've, I've been into the other restaurants and I know that they care just as much as I do. And I don't see this blatant disrespect for the rules anywhere that I go. I see more differently, like we are all really trying. So I just wanted to say that. So the thing that I really just want to point out, one thing is that I don't know if we'll make it through the winter in code, in the, in the red level. I just want you to know that. I hope we can, but I mean, I'm just telling you right now, and this is not in an attempt to be dramatic. We've done everything possible that we can to mitigate the impact of COVID on our business. I have no more rabbits in my hat. And if this level red goes on very long, already in the winter, you know, it's
Wendy, thank you for your permits. You reached your three minutes and we're trying to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to talk, so we're gonna go. I had mentioned earlier, Ms. Ms. Martinez, that there was a Jamie Snow that, that was on the panel list. I don't see Jamie with the hand raised. So the next person is Eric. Jamie, if you want to sign back on. It looks like Eric Gao is the last person with his hand raised. So if I don't see any other hands raised, we will close this section of the agenda after Eric finishes. If Jamie doesn't call back in or either sign back on to Zoom. So Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I just reiterate some of the other comments. I don't think the city police force should be enforcing the mandate rules. I understand, yes, this is, we're at a critical time and we need to make, we need to stay safe as we are keeping the masks on. Cleaning and doing what diligence the businesses already have been doing. I've been studying a little bit with the, with the virus in other countries. Look at the WHO, the World Health Organization's timeline. And this was actually predicted beforehand that this was going to be another surge. You know, I know this sounds a little callous with this, but this phase two is going to pass and we're going to get through this. But we need to also play into it and see what we can do. We've done pretty well so far. As far as in Colorado with the, with the death rate, it's been, it's been lower than most other places. Anyway, it does, you know, we just, we just need to come up with a better compromise. You guys have some tough decisions. But the main thing is, is not killing the rest of the businesses that have, that have survived this long. So with that, that's, that's me. I'm done.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Ms. Martinez, I see a telephone number ending in three, four, eight, five with the hand raised. Could you let that person in and then right after that person looks like there's a Mario? So go ahead.
If you, since you're on the telephone to unmute yourself, please dial star six.
So, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, if you could state your name, where you're from, I appreciate that.
Yes, my name is Jamie Snow and I'm from Alamosa. And my mom, Donna Chapel, also a native from Alamosa. She owns Smoothie's Juice Bar. And I think I've heard a lot of things tonight that have been heavy on our hearts. She's been open for over eight years now. And with this code red, it's significantly impacted her business. I just want to piggyback on a couple of comments that were said in regards to people being able to be responsible and make their own choices and not have this policed. So I will just make it short and sweet. I just want to thank you guys also for listening to the voice of your community. And I'm hopeful, I feel like if, if it's not this, it'll be another restriction and another restriction. And I thought at some point, we kind of have to take a stand and be able to say, we can be responsible. We have our own choices and we have the right to make those own choices. But I do appreciate our community standing up together and supporting each other and being able to have the right to make, to make our own choices and support our families. So I'm really proud of my mom and her business and I'm hopeful that this doesn't last and that you guys really consider not enforcing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate your comments. Okay, it looks like the last hand that I see raised is Mario, Ms. Martinez. So we will go ahead. And allow Mario, if you would, unmute yourself, please. Mario, will you unmute yourself? So we can hear you. Thank you. Go ahead, Mario.
Hi, my name is Mario Miletto. I live out on County Road one twelve point nine, out by the mushroom farm. I just want to say that I agree with the county's decision. I see this ultimately as an issue of how you're going to direct law enforcement to react to potential civil disobedience. And I just want to say that I'm strongly opposed to directing law enforcement to enforce the code level red mandates. You know, instead of, instead of sending APD into breakup, a Thanksgiving, a Christmas or a peaceful protest gathering. I implore council to analyze how other areas like South Dakota have handled COVID without sending in the police. You have to understand that a significant number of your citizens are seeing this in the media that states like New York are going to the extreme extremes of setting up checkpoints to enforce travel restrictions. And I say more people are scared of things like that than the virus itself. This virus has been with us for more than nine months. You know, I'm all for hearing about, hearing out the science, but I also don't want a scientific dictatorship hurting my ability to put food on the table for whatever they want, whenever they want. I don't know how you justify doing something so extreme, like hurting businesses and people's jobs based on a case rate alone. I mean, it's like a ninety-nine and a half percent survival rate. And to me, it's crazy. I think it's a very, very serious matter sending in the police. In my opinion, it makes us not America. It is dividing us greatly. There are thousands of doctors and scientists and studies that have been censored. I don't trust what the official narrative is and a whole bunch of people don't either. And that's a fact. We don't agree on anything. I think the issue of sending in police to enforce such sensitive matters in this political climate is the issue of our time and I think it's very destabilizing. And I think you have to say no to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Thank you for your comments. Okay, council, I've given several instructions and we've allowed everyone who had had their hand raised an opportunity to speak. We've been in this meeting for over an hour now. And at this time, I do not see any other hands raised. Ms. Martinez, will you please confirm that I'm seeing what I'm seeing before I close the citizen comment section down?
Yes, sir. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, since there are no other hands raised, I will now close the citizen comment segment, section of the agenda and then bring it back over to our staff. Our city manager and city attorney for follow-up and follow-through and then council will comment.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff before they proceed.
Go ahead, Mr. Carson.
Eric or Heather? Eric, probably. Can you point out to me in this order? Because I've looked, I've looked a lot since March. Where it states that anyone besides Della and a crew that she deems should be enforcing this in our county. And by Della, I mean our public, our county public health director. I don't want, I don't want to go down rabbit holes. I just want you to point out in that order where it states that besides a belligerent business or person, that anyone besides Della should be involved in enforcement. Can you point that out for me? Because I've looked all day and I haven't found it.
Well, I don't know what order you were looking at, so I don't know whether it is.
In general, from going back to, going back to the original stay-at-home order. The, let's go back to basics, basic, basic. The original stay-at-home order and every order that's piggybacked on that since has primarily based itself on the original, which was technically the most stringent. In that order, it says that public health is to be notified and then public health deems the enforcement at a county level. So I've still struggled finding where a municipality that doesn't have its own municipal public health entity is supposed to enforce it locally at that level. Besides, beyond, you know, beyond complaints. If a complaint comes in, then they call county public health. County public health then goes to the business or entity and gives them a warning and proceeds such in whatever protocol they have. If they get to a certain point and they're being belligerent according to the last order that we discussed like this, then we involve police. But on a general basis, I'd like to see where it points out the municipals, municipality's responsibility, please. Just show me.
Just as a point of order, I don't know if you wanted us to conduct this how we would normally conduct the meeting.
I tried to give Carson an opportunity to speak, but we're going to conduct this meeting like we normally conduct the meeting. At the, after Ms. Brooks and after our attorney, Mr. Suezal, has an opportunity to give an overview of what we're talking about, council, then we will be able to make comments. Please allow them the opportunity and the freedom to speak so we can make sure that we have clarity throughout this whole meeting. And then council, you will have all the time you need to speak and bring up your comments, okay? Do not interrupt them. Let them speak.
Is freedom a pun?
No, go ahead. So I can answer Counselor Carson's question. The most recent order from the Colorado Department of Health and the Environment has a section six on enforcement that says this order will be enforced by all appropriate legal means. Local authorities are encouraged to determine the best course of action to encourage maximum compliance. And the way that city, the city has done that with all existing public health orders is to respond to complaints that there are violations of those public health orders by checking that out, if necessary, educating the business that gave rise to the complaint and that usually takes care of it. If it doesn't, as you know, we did issue a citation for reckless endangerment to the campus cafe when they refused to abide by the public health orders after, after discussion. So that's, that's how the city does it. That's what's appropriate and that's what the order calls for.
Okay, so if we can get a little bit back on track and Eric's kind of still on my part of the presentation, but that's okay. We were going to tag team on it anyways. So I did want to start out from a historical purpose and I do apologize, my bandwidth, I'm having some issues. And so I think if I keep my video off, I can make sure not to have a disruption. But I know it's not as personable, so I apologize for that. It's just a voice coming out of a box. But I do want to share historically, council has talked at different points since March on what enforcement should look like as we've gone through different stages and, and heard from businesses and, and struggled with trying to understand both the science and this virus and its impact on the economy and businesses. It's, it's been a lot. And as these numbers have changed, so has the placement that the state has placed us on that, on the dial. In the past, the direction that council has provided to staff following those discussions is that if the state is issued a certain order with certain restrictions that our enforcement would look very similar to what we're looking for violations. It's saying my internet's unstable, but we, we have not used.
You don't have VPN on, do you, Heather?
No, I don't, but thank you. Um, so we, we have not been aggressive, but what we have done is if we have received a complaint, the police department will go and have a conversation. And a lot of times it ends with that conversation. There's been a lot of those. And in most of those, the business simply didn't realize that one little adjustment would bring the minutes. So I'm very grateful for the police department and the work they put in. The city attorneys indicated it's only one business that after multiple conversations.
I can't hear you.
So what we're gonna do.
Department, public health.
We're losing you, Heather.
Heather, you might want to phone in.
And that's when we did have to issue a ticket.
So Heather, go ahead and phone in. Heather, Heather, go ahead and phone in because you're breaking up bad, okay? We'll come back to you after you phone in. Ms. Martinez, can you make sure that you bring her back in when she phones in into this panelist section, if you don't mind? And in the meantime, Mr. Suezal, if it looks like you had something on the screen you wanted to pull up. Do you, do you want to make any comments until she calls back in? Heather had actually pulled up that screen share and I'm not quite sure why she did, but I just pulled it up again. And until she does call in, what I would point out is that what the state has done effective Sunday, so three days ago, was to move us from the level orange high risk to the level red severe risk. And if you've been following the communications from the Alamosa County Department of Health, we have been actually in the, the kind of indicators that would indicate level red for weeks. So we were in orange and the state kept us in orange, but we had been having the kind of infection spread indicators, both in terms of new infections per hundred thousand of populous positivity rates, hospital capacity, that would have had us in the, in the level red quite some time ago. We are in level red as of Sunday or we're officially moved into level red, I should say, as of Sunday. And you can And you can, if you look at the differences between orange and red, the, the biggest hit I think does come in the restaurants, which go from limitations that in orange were a 25% of capacity or 50 people, whichever was lower, to closed for indoor dining. There are other differences with, with other fact or other aspects of, of the business community. But just looking at it, I, I think that restaurants take the biggest hit. Of course, gyms you can see move from 25% of capacity down to 10% of capacity. And there, there are other things that certainly change from orange to red. So Heather, if you're back on and wanted to talk more about this chart while it's screen shared, jump in.
Can you zoom that in Eric? Stretch it and make it bigger so we can read it.
I've called in.
Mute your computer Heather. That will stop.
Heather, try dialing star six on your phone.
Oh, if, if she's trying to come in on the phone audio, then she needs to mute her computer. That's why it's echoing.
I, I, I think you're unmuted now Heather.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry guys, the bandwidth is, is just very terrible. So yes, the reason I was going to pull up that graph is the, the quick overview that the city attorneys provided on the difference between when we were in yellow, then we were moved to orange and then very quickly moved to red in some of those areas that face the biggest impact. The only other thing I wanted to share before Eric maybe spent a little bit more time on something is that we do have Della as an attendee if there is any questions for the public health director. But Eric, I'm wanting to make sure you've covered that while the state places and has the authority to place us at these different levels, what are legal wiggle room or abilities that we have within those, those placements from the state?
Right, so we, we do not control where the state places us. The state doesn't really control where they place us either, other than setting up the dial and the various indicators that the dial takes account of. Though, that's just data. And it, like I said, it did take the state a while to move us into where the data said we really are. But we, as we discussed in, in the last COVID discussion we had, we have no, as a city, epidemiological or even health expertise. And so I, it would be folly, I think, to try to substitute our judgment for that of the state in terms of where we fall on the dial chart and what that means we should do for what's necessary to keep the population safe. Della does have expertise on that, and if counsel wants to hear from her, I would encourage counsel to ask her her opinions on that. But I, I think we, we just, we deal with the facts as they are. Counsel as a, as a governing body takes more into account perhaps than the state does because you're looking at the economic lifeblood of the community as well. And so what brought this to a head was the actions of Alamosa County in essentially taking a position that they reject the state having moved us into red. I, I, that's not a meaningful thing to do for city council. We are in red. The question is, as Mr. Burris actually highlighted, what we have discretion over is how we enforce these state orders. The state also has discretion over that. So we can decide as a city, you can decide as a city council to direct city staff primarily, primarily the police department to prioritize certain things and, and some of those options that were suggested in the council communication. But the state can have a completely different priority, and they can come in and, and enforce through the Colorado Department of Public Health Environment and the Attorney General, the COVID dial. They can do that both in a criminal context and they can do it in a regulatory context that some of the speakers have pointed out by affecting business holders licenses. So we're not in the universe tonight of the city deciding how it's going to address COVID. What the universe that we're in is the city deciding how it's going to direct the city police department to address or to enforce the fact that we are now in the red level zone on the COVID dot.
And, and, and so just one second, and so Eric, I believe as we talked, you know, one of the examples that you had provided was, so for example, on restaurants, which seem to be hit hard, if counsel wanted to say something to the effect of we will not be enforcing for restaurants and bars, but our expectation is that you stay at that orange level. If someone complains about you and we have to go respond from an enforcement perspective, our only option is to enforce at that red level, which means if they are violating that 25% or whatever that orange level is and we have to enforce, then it would be at the red level and they could potentially lose the indoor dining. There's a lot of kind of nuances and like it can send mixed messages. But did you want to clarify, like how that, what that option is?
Right, so again, the C does not have a health department. The county's health department has not done anything counter to what the state has in place. So had the county's health department decided it was going to take the state on and somehow prove that our incidents rates were low enough that we really should stay more open than the red level would dictate, then we might have a jurisdictional question of do we follow the county or do we follow the state? But we don't have that. The, this, the only operative COVID restrictions are those that the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment has set forth in their most recent order and in their move of us to red. So that's the universe we live in. And we can either enforce those restrictions that are in the, in the red dial or we can say we have other priorities and as long as people aren't going crazy, we're not going to enforce those. But red is the only restriction that we have. We have neither the capacity, the authority, nor the ability to place the city of Alamosa in, in anything other than the red zone of the COVID dial. That's, that's the only entity that can do that is, is the state department of health or potentially the county department of health, which has not done so. So what Heather was saying was, you know, we, you can direct the police department to and staff that you've got other priorities than making sure restaurants aren't doing indoor dining so long as they're not doing indoor dining in any greater level than pick your number than the orange set out or the yellow set out. I'm not advocating that you should do that. I don't think staff is taking a position on this. We're just putting options in front of counsel. So staff will take positions on what counsel can do, but on what counsel should do. That's why you guys are paid the big bucks. That's it. That's a hard call.
Thank you, Eric.
Hey, thank you, Eric. And Ms. Brooks, did you have any other comments before I start moving this meeting along?
No, and just to reiterate, if there is any questions, Della is available.
Good, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Since our city attorney just clearly explained that we as council don't have the capacity, the authority or ability to move the city along the dial, the different colors to red, from orange and all that good stuff. And we do have access to the county health director on the line. At this time, I am going to allow the county health director to just give us a brief overview of what's going on. And then at that time, I'll bring it back to counsel for comments and questions. Ms. Della, are you able to come in or Ms. Martinez, is she allowed to be a panelist?
I just moved her into the meeting.
And if she would like, I do have the recent weekly situational report I could put up, the one dated today.
Got it.
Sure, this is, this is Delia Vieda. I'm the public health director for Alamos County. And yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful to look at some of our numbers. So as Mr. Srieso expressed so clearly just a moment ago, the data is what it is. And it is true that we have been at level red for several weeks since the beginning of November. The state gave some time to respond, then they moved us down to level orange. But you can really see on this graph here that since the end of September, our two-week incidence rate has climbed precipitously to where we find it today. And this is a rate, these are not raw numbers. Raw numbers are converted into a rate per hundred thousand people as a means to look across populations of different sizes and see what's going on in those populations. It's harder with raw numbers. This very clearly shows that our community is, is experiencing a surge. And the data is what the data is, and it's the data that moves us from level to level on the dial. It's not an arbitrary decision by any party. That's why the dial was put in place to remove the perception, I suppose, that the decisions are being made for one reason or another. The metrics that are used to determine where what, where community is at on the dial of course are directly related to infection rates throughout the community. They're also predicated on the stress that the hospitals and the hospital system of Colorado is experiencing. And it also takes into account whether the healthcare workers themselves are able to have access to appropriate personal protective equipment when they're taking care of their patients. And so all of those factors in a very general sense are, are measured by eight different measures to determine where one is at on the dial. I guess the only other thing that I would say in reference to the specific numbers on today's report for each of our counties, if you scroll down to the next page, yeah, right, right there, right there. Alamosa County this morning had 121 cases. We added 38 to those numbers today. That was in large part due to the community testing that was done last weekend. But it does indicate that there is significant number of infections in our community. And as the county public health director, it is my duty and responsibility to promote actions that protect the public health and to work to protect the public health. And in order to do those things, I rely on science and best practice. And the guidelines that were built into the dial are also Colorado's interpretation of what that best practice looks like. It has kept us from overrunning our hospital system to date, even within this very great surge. But we do monitor not only what's going on at our local facility, but we monitor our send-out hospitals as well, the hospitals on the front range that receive our patients who are too seriously ill to be treated locally. And three out of those four hospitals all week have been on a watch to see if they're going to exceed their ICU capacity. One of them has, has consistently had no ICU beds available. And in fact, our, our hospital here, as I mentioned to our board on Friday, is, has been receiving patients from front-range hospitals in an effort to reduce stress on the system. And so while I recognize the burden that this places on all of us, I can only go by what the science tells me. And I can only act in the interest of protecting everyone's health in the county of Alamosa. And that's my job. So it doesn't help you make the decision at hand. But that is the perspective from which I, I come to this meeting this evening.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Della, and we thank you so much for the time and effort you, you've been putting into these efforts for our community over the past several months. So what we're going to do now, please stay on, on the line and we're going to open it up for counsel to start making comments. What I am going to do, counsel, I'll recognize that people will have their hands raised. In the order in which your hands are raised, please allow the council members to speak and get their message out without interrupting, and then we'll have plenty of time to ask all of the questions that you have, okay? So the first hand that I see raised is Counselor Griegego, followed by Counselor Carson, then Counselor Veehill, then Counselor Brawls, Counselor Griegego, Europe.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Eric in what he says that the state has the right to move us on the dial. But I think we can question the numbers on how that dial was moved. And I think I had a, a question for Della, you know, on this cumulative incident rate where it talks about regions' population. How do we come up with the Alamosa measure that makes us move? Is it the population of, of Alamosa County and city that says, okay, you're going to go into red? Because our surrounding neighbors are in yellow and I heard that they're going to be moving into orange. How does that work, Della?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gregor, you're correct. Each of the counties moves on the dial independently. We have not moved on the dial as a region. When we were preparing to move to the protect our neighbor level, which I think is green now, we were choosing to act as a group. But as we've moved to orange and red, Alamosa is the community that has shown by all of those metrics that I was, I was mentioning earlier that red is actually where our numbers are telling us we should be. The other counties aren't quite there yet. And so we're the ones that, that moved to red. You're correct that several other counties have been measuring in the orange. You're correct that several other counties have been measuring in the orange and either have moved to orange or will be moving to orange shortly. But our status is based only on our population numbers in Alamosa County.
So, so Della, you're taking that I think we're the Alamosa County and cities a little, little over seventeen thousand? Is that the number you're using?
The state is using the Dola numbers for population calculation.
Do you know those numbers?
I don't have it right offhand, but I could look that up for you.
Yeah, and, and the reason I'm bringing up the point is, I think we're a little over seventeen thousand in population, if you take the city of Alamosa and a county. But then, since we are the hub of the valley, that number should be treated may, maybe add another ten thousand, another fifteen thousand. And then you add New Mexico, northern New Mexico, because they're shutting down, you add another. So I think in, in figuring out the number that should be used, all of those points should be looked at before we, before we switched the dial. You know, and I, I think that's where we're missing out. Somebody earlier pointed some numbers and I don't know if he's right or wrong, but I think those numbers need to be looked at. And I agree, we have to follow the law, the mandate that the governor gives us, we have to follow it. There's no, no choice. But we can question how they got there. And I think the question is to use those numbers and then come up with the figure of if we're still in, in, in orange or maybe even in yellow because of the numbers. So I, I think that's where I questioned the fact that, you know, I, if they can show me by putting all those numbers together that we should be in red, then I, I'm more likely to go with it. But right now, I don't think that they're, they're using all those numbers. And I would like to see, you know, and it was brought up early that we stay in maybe orange until we get some kind of answer of, of those numbers are being used or not. So I, I, that's where I question, and I, I agree with Eric where, you know, he can't really guide us, but we can question the numbers to see if we are in the right dial. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Griege. Can you all change that screen back to the other view, please?
Leave that screen up for a sec. Leave, leave that screen up for a sec.
Hold up, hold up. So, so I can make sure that Counselor Griege has had an opportunity to, to have his question put out there. Is there anyone on the team right now could look up those Dola numbers so that we can have some clarity in regards to Counselor Griege's valid concern and question while we're doing this meeting? And then when you find those Dola numbers that they're using for Alamosa County, can someone please share that information with council as we go through this meeting?
Okay. You could, but let me just interrupt, Mayor. And again, I, I don't think that the city has the epidemiological or even the statistical expertise to challenge what's been carefully thought through with respect to this dial. But and Della can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you look at this two-week cumulative incident, incident rate for the entire San Luis Valley, that takes into account really kind of what Counselor Griege was talking about, because this is the entire valley. And I, I believe that the reason this is red is because this is an indicator that our numbers are really in the red. And look how far we are in the red. Anything above a hundred is considered extremely high, and we're at six hundred.
Yeah.
As a valley. That, that takes out the, the numbers problem that you were getting at, Counselor.
No, it, it doesn't, it doesn't take it out. I don't agree.
Eric, can I, Mayor, can I address Eric?
So what we're going to do is we'll let Counselor Griege go finish up with Eric. And then Counselor Carson, you're next. We will give you that opportunity to speak after Counselor Griege finishes up with Mr. Sreeso. Go ahead.
Eric, that's why I bring up the fact that our, our neighbors are, have been in yellow when we've been in orange. And now they're already moving into orange. And if you look at that, that list that where, where the problems are, they're in Rio Grande County and they're in yellow. Of all, of all the outbreaks, a majority, a majority of those are in, in Rio Grande County. And yet we are the ones in red and they're in yellow? That's why I questioned the numbers. And that's why if we can't get a correct number to put us in the right dial, I think we should stay in orange until we do get something like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Griege. Up next, we have Counselor Carson.
I have a question for Della, but, but first I want to make a comment. I, I appreciate all of council and everybody that's on, because there's a ton of people listening and, and everybody's vested in this issue. So I appreciate everybody taking time, you know, the night before Thanksgiving to address this. This obviously to anybody on the phone that's questioning our dedication to the city, we don't make big bucks for doing this. We don't make anything for doing this. We're here for our city because we love this community and because we want to see it prosper. Now that being said, Luke made a comment earlier about people playing doctor. It was insulting. I don't play doctor and I am an expert. I'm a data expert. I'm an analyst. And I looked at this, I've looked at this data steadily since March. And the CDC stopped reporting numbers on other illnesses in April. To me, that's questionable. That's data manipulation. Today at the CDC's website, COVID and the flu are contributing to higher pneumonia deaths. Now, the fact is, is people stand here and talk about the two hundred thousand, we had the guy earlier talking about World War II and comparing numbers. That's a false number because those two hundred thousand numbers, and, and Della can argue this with me, we can go back and forth. But those numbers are based on a ninety-six percent on, on a percentile of six percent people dying of what they have deemed purely COVID symptoms. Everybody else in that is being lumped in with, again, the CDC's and all these other comorbidities that have been included. Now again, today at the CDC, at their website, the scientists, we're talking about science at the CDC's website. It talked about COVID influenza this year contributing to higher amounts of pneumonia death. Now, we're not sitting here talking about pneumonia restrictions or anything else. We're talking about this contributing factor, COVID. COVID is now being weaponized in many ways, financially, medically, societally, every way. We are in a society where, yes, we do have the ability to deem what we want in our business. If a business owner posts a sign, you should respect that. It's their right. We all have that right. Again, there's people on both sides of this argument. But when you say that people are playing doctor and just making calls out of the blue, that's not true. I presented all of the other counters' data from the WHO and the CDC since March. The numbers are funny. Now, you can argue that or not, but the numbers don't tell you the true story. Again, I'm, I deal with data every day. I've looked at this data steadily and the data is funky all over the place. And, you know, you can manipulate data to tell you whatever you want, for whatever your agenda is. Now, we don't have a hidden agenda here at the city. We don't have an agenda. We're city councillors that are people that walk with you every day. Our agenda is the betterment of this city. And and all we want to do is see it move forward. Now, this is a hard decision. Now, I'm going to make a comment that isn't going to be popular. But if tonight, we're going to decide that we're going to shut our restaurants down and deem that the governor, who is not a medical expert and is, is, you know, making decisions off the cuff, like assigning vegans to be the head of our ag council livestock board. Those aren't good decisions. Now I have to question other decisions that he makes. Now, the thing is this, if we're going to say that if you went to a restaurant in the last three weeks, you probably got COVID, that, that's pretty sketchy because the fact is, is any of the big chain stores here in our valley have the highest concentration of people in and out all day. These lines of people around the sides of the store at Walmart where people are not six feet apart, you know, these, these are huge crowds. So if we're going to go here, if we're going to say we need to shut these indoor businesses down and, and close them down, we need to shut the doors of Walmart and shut the doors of City Market and shut the doors of Safeway as well. That's, that, that's the way it should be because the reality is, is those giant spikes are happening not only in these, in these restaurants where they've done every single thing possible to mitigate this, this virus. I'm proud of what our restaurants and our businesses have done here. They've done everything possible. And this virus is still moving. It's a contagion and medical experts know that it's going to move. So it, it doesn't matter how many mitigation measures we take, it's still going to move and we're still going to see cases. Now again, if we're going to make that decision tonight, we got to really look at it hard and think about the places that are spreading this virus in our valley. And those are our big chain stores because I see people in there without masks and, and, and do that all the time because I've walked in there without a mask and nobody tells me anything. And again, we're going to come down on these small businesses that have barely hung on and they've done everything we've asked and they've made all the flexes. If it was up to me, I'd go back to fifty percent and enforce it at that level and then watch what happens. And, and if we're going to take an approach, let's close these big stores now. That, that's my comment because that's what we're at. We're in it, we are in an, in an era where people are weaponizing this. Now, is it real? Of course it's real. I had a baby fourteen days ago and my paranoia about COVID has never been higher. People are, we're not going to gather for Thanksgiving. I, I, I'm trying to do everything I can. I've been wearing a mask. Everybody here knows how I feel about that. Now, I know the mitigation hap, has to happen. We have to. It is spreading, but there is false numbers, guys. There is data being reported that is skewed. I am an expert in data. I do this every day. It is my living. Just like you guys are health experts. I'm an expert in data and I read this data. I, I've studied it very good, very thoroughly. And it doesn't make sense. And that's the part that really freaks me out. Now with that, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the question of Della and, and I already kind of know where the answer is going to be, but, but I want to make this, I want to ask this question because it needs to be said. Put that screen up, Eric, again, with your graph, because graphs are very horrible. Because you can go to the, you can go to almost any university's website now and look at their graphs and, and it's easy to change the way data looks by your X and Y axis, very easy. They, they'll try to show you the same data with different X and Y and it, one piece of data can look extremely scary versus another one. Now, this is raw data. So there's not really fudging in this data. These are raw numbers. These are people that are sick. That's true. That's a real fact. Now, keep in mind, these, these fluctuations that we have at the beginning of this chart are the beginning of COVID and when we had a lot of random testing going on in medical facilities and things like that. Now, if you look at this curve, you see this, this swing upward at the, at the bottom of the green there. There's a swing upward towards the end of September, in the middle of August, towards the end of September. Keep in mind that Adam State started a mass testing at that point, which would then tell us all these new numbers. Again, with that, we've had an increase in the availability of tests, which again, if we take our time here and go look at what the effective accuracy of these tests are, it's ridiculous. And from a data standpoint, it's, it's maddening because it, it tells nothing. And, and you have a five percent rate of accuracy in, in a lot of these tests. And so again, Della, does the spike in cases in the valley correlate with the increase in testing that has been made available to the people of the valley? Please answer that.
So I just want to point out something before, before we move on to testing.
Well, I just wanted a simple answer.
Yes, your question came up earlier, Councilman, of how the rate per hundred thousand in Alamosa compared to this regional rate. And I have that for you and I'd like to share that. While the region is showing just under six hundred per one hundred thousand Alamosas, two-week cumulative incidence rate today was seven hundred forty-seven point seven nine per hundred thousand. Which shows that Alamosa is higher than the rest of the region, which gets back to Mr. Griege's comment about Alamosa measuring in the red and other counties in the valley measuring in orange. So let's talk about testing. Adam State did have a test event, a three-day test event. I'm sorry, I don't remember the date on that specifically.
It was in August.
They just, they just had another two-day test event. These numbers don't reflect the most recent test events because we're just now getting those, those results in. So our healthcare partners have consistently been testing based on their capacity to test. So they have been testing individuals who are symptomatic, individuals who are asymptomatic but are part of an outbreak investigation. And that's really who they've been able to test over the past several months. Now, we've been doing outbreak-related testing in addition to the community test events that Adam State has been able to host. And so the more we test, the, while we may identify individuals who are infected with COVID, it also tempers our positivity rate and brings our positivity rate down because we're testing more folks who are negative. Increased testing is something we should all be looking for and working toward because it is in all of our best interest to identify the people who are infected, get them isolated through their infectious period and quarantine their contacts. That is one of the fundamental ways that any communicable disease is controlled, whether we're talking about COVID, hepatitis or a common cold.
So you do agree that the more we test. So you would agree that the more we test, of course, this curve is going to go up because the number of positive people will, you know, will, they'll be located. Whether they're ace, well, but, but whether they're asymptomatic or symptomatic, the test is built to.
The, the numbers will go up if there is spread of disease in the community. And what our numbers are telling us right now is that we have widespread illness in our community. We've got widespread community transmission. And the outbreaks that we do have in Alamosa County, and I think we've got seven or eight outbreaks right now, are all across sectors in our community. They involve houses of worship, stores, restaurants, child cares, higher education, skilled nursing facilities, you name it. And so that also tells me that there is widespread community transmission.
So do you think we should shut them all down?
No, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I'm, this isn't, I'm not beating jerky. This is a legitimate question. Walmart, City Market, Safeway, I'm asking you, seriously, I'm not, I'm not being dumb here. I'm not being argumentative. Do you think these are possible point of spread? And do you think we should shut them down? Because again, as a father, a new father now, I've got older kids too, and I was concerned before, but now you pass by Walmart and you have these droves of people in line outside waiting who are much more likely to get infected in that line than actually walking through a twenty, thirty thousand foot store. So do you think we should mitigate that? If we're going to say that indoor dining is not allowable because the spread is there, do you think we should really consider hitting these stores and, and enforcing, either enforcing or shutting down? Till this is clear? Because honestly, I think there's more spread going on there than there is in these small restaurants. And, and it's not arguable because we don't have data on it. Oh, you know, again, it's, it's, that's a matter of opinion.
So I don't think we can close our grocery stores. People need to get food. And in the winter months in Alamos County, we can't grow our own food. So clearly we need to go to the store. I can tell you that I've been in regular contact with our retailers, especially over the last few weeks, since we've been changing from one level of the dial to the other. But we have a weekly call with the store manager at Walmart. We talk about mitigation. We talk about enforcement. We talk about numbers. We talk about sanitizing and disinfecting. We talk about social distancing and we do that every week. So I am doing my best to help them do their best and I have been doing so for nine months.
Okay, with that, with that being said, I mean, I, thank you and we appreciate that. Now, again, i- if, if you've been doing your best and the restaurant been doing their best and, and everybody's doing their best, what's, what's the end? Where's patient zero? You know, when do we see an end to this? When do we stop jumping at the whim of the governor? And, and that's why I agree with Counselor Griege. We do have the right to question. And I brought a month ago. When is it going to, when are we going to say, you know what, maybe he's not making the right decisions for us? Maybe decisions that affect the metro don't necessarily apply here. When do we get there? I mean, the reality is, is we can play this game forever and twenty twenty-one is going to be the same and we won't have any businesses here. And the only place to eat will be Safeway and the virus will continue to spread.
Okay, Counselor Carson, I'm going to let council, I mean, Ms. Brooks say a few words and then we'll, we'll bring it back for those answers to those questions and then I'll move to the next person. Go ahead, Ms. Brooks and Della, feel free to respond.
So, so thank you, Mayor. I just, the concept of the grocery stores and the chains and stuff, Della, it's my understanding throughout this process, you've been working closely with Walmart as well and the numbers that they're allowing and, and those types of things. And so I just think, since we have a lot of people listening and it sometimes feels unequal, I just wanted to make, to ask you that question just to confirm that you have been. unequal, I just wanted to make, to ask you that question just to confirm that you have been working with those entities as well.
Yes, um, Heather, I, we have been, uh, we have a weekly call with Walmart. Um, and like I said, I've, I've also been recently reaching out um, to the other large retailers, um, to let them know um, what their change in restrictions should look like. Um, I've also been speaking with them about special events um, that they've had planned that they've canceled, um, routine things that they do in preparation for the holidays. So I think, I think what I hear from the folks that I'm working with and who my staff are working with is that everybody is trying to follow the rules. People are trying to do their best, um, and they're trying to keep their businesses afloat at the same time. It isn't one or the other. It has to be both. And the restrictions are there for a reason, because we've got a lot of illness in our community. And I can't tell this group when we'll be able to shift to another level. We have to measure within that level for a full two weeks reliably in order to be able to move to that more open level of restrictions. Um, we're not there yet. And I can't tell you when we'll be there. If we work at adhering to the restrictions in the level where we find ourselves, um, and we help each other to do so, we will be more likely to contain illness and get to a place where we're measuring reliably for two weeks to move um, to orange, for example, since we're in red now. Um, but if we don't do those things, we're much less likely to help each other to contain disease um, and we'll probably end up staying in red longer.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Brooks and Della, thank you very much. So we have several other council members who would like to make comments, so I am going to recognize them. Uh, and the remaining counselors with your hands up. We have Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Hensley. And then, uh, the last council member with their hand up is, uh, Counselor Daniel. Okay, Counselor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my, my questions are quick for Della. Then I want to, then I will have a whole other discussion, I guess, as counsel. Uh, but just so we can get, you know, get it done with Della. Della, you said, um, can you please explain again our current situation at the hospital? With I C, in, in, in terms of ICU beds and availability and, and that?
So I don't have specific numbers, uh, but what I, what I can bring to this group is that our hospital is monitoring their situation very closely. Um,
Numbers nine, nine ICU beds full, I'm sorry.
Yes, so hospital bed capacity changes, um, changes throughout the day. It changes from one day to the next. Um, and it's dependent on a lot of factors. Patients are transferred in, patients are discharged home, patients are flown out to another facility. And so while hospital bed capacity is an important thing for us to monitor, um, it's also important to monitor staffing. And what I can tell you is that staffing in all of our healthcare institutions across the state of Colorado, um, is stretched very, very thin.
And Della, they might, that, do so with staffing. Just so people understand, people, staff at a hospital might be thin because either they're sick or they're having to quarantine, correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. And then, um, you did say that we are getting people flown to Alamosa from the front range?
Yes, there was a, there was an article that, um, Connie Martin shared with, um, the county commissioners. Um, I don't know if it was from Thursday or Wednesday last week. Uh, but in it, she described very clearly that they were receiving patients from the front range, um, which is just the reverse of what usually happens. We usually fly patients out um, from the San Luis Valley. And the reason that looking at our hospital is important, but it's equally important to look at the hospital network um, is because we are part of a healthcare network. Our hospital can only take care of patients up to a certain point and then they do need to transfer them out. Um, to other facilities with other levels of care and other equipment available to them and other specializations. Um, and when that entire system is strained, the ability to transfer patients, whether it's for a heart attack or COVID complications, or a stroke, or something else, um, becomes very, very strained. Um, and it puts strain not only on those people who might be taking care of COVID patients, but it strains the healthcare workers that are taking care of other patients as well.
Right, and you, and there's, there are examples of that in South Dakota, uh, where people are not getting treated for uh, heart attacks or strokes, or pregnant women are having a tough time trying to deliver a baby. Thank you for that. Also, uh, you mentioned the Adam State testing from this past weekend. And currently, Alamosa County has a hundred and twenty-one positive cases. But you said we're going to add thirty-eight to that number?
Yes, we, we started getting results from the community testing. Um, and I know that, that we added at least thirty-eight today. Um, so again, testing is good because it helps us identify people who are infected and it helps us get those people isolated.
So this was a free community testing. If someone from Swatch came down and got a test, would that number register in Alamosa County or in Swatch?
No, it, it registers in Swatch.
Okay, and then you did mention this a little bit, but, um, if more people were to test, that would bring the positivity rate down, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, very much, Counselor Vio, uh, for those questions. So, uh, that's going to bring us to the next person is Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Daniel. Counselor Brawls?
My first question is to, to Della. Uh, again, it gets, gets back to the numbers. Um, I guess I don't quite understand why influenza cases have been going down and coronavirus cases have been going up. Uh, are we absolutely sure that we're not including in any influenza cases into COVID numbers?
Yeah, so I, I'll take your first question, um, first. Uh, we saw a briefer influenza season, um, this spring. And, um, it's still, it, it's still early enough, um, in this year's influenza season, um, where it's difficult to determine, um, whether we're going to see the same low numbers of influenza. Um, one of the reasons, um, why we may be seeing less influenza um, is that we all were operating under a stay-at-home order in the spring. Um, and so that dramatically reduced our ability to, uh, mix with each other and probably helped us reduce influenza transmission. Um, we've also really been working hard, um, not only in public health, but with our healthcare partners to vaccinate um, as many people as possible for the influenza this fall. Uh, knowing full well that, um, being infected with both at the same time, or being affected with one and then the other in short order can be profoundly debilitating, um, and makes it much more likely that you'll have severe complications from either one of those illnesses. So we've been working really hard to get people vaccinated. Um, we, even in Alamosa County Public Health, we've expanded our community outreach vaccinations. Um, I know that our partners at Valleywide and SLB Health have done the same thing. Um, and so it's my sincere hope that we continue to see lower than expected influenza numbers because of those efforts. And to know that.
You're absolutely sure.
Yeah, to get to your second question.
I'm not a medical expert. But you're absolutely sure that there's no way to.
That, so the test that one does for the coronavirus that causes COVID nineteen is a completely different test than the one that's done for influenza. So if you test positive for the coronavirus that causes COVID nineteen, you've got that coronavirus.
Yeah, but that's.
Counselor Carson, Counselor Carson, we allowed you to speak, sir. But all due respect, would you please allow the rest of the council to ask their questions? And then we'll come back to you in a few minutes. Please do not interrupt others as they're speaking. Go ahead, Counselor Brawls.
David's breaking up.
I, I keep getting break up. Yeah, yeah, I keep breaking up. Uh, my next question is for Eric. Uh, if we agree to stay at enforcement level orange, does that insulate the businesses in any way from liability by the state?
No. Short answer, no. Um, and, and just to be clear, it's not that we're saying we're staying at enforcement level orange. We're just saying we're not going to enforce the CDPHE. It, it's a subtle distinction, but we're not going to enforce the CDPHE orders. Um, unless people are completely out of hand beyond what was in orange. And if they are, then we'll enforce the orders and that enforcement is, is red. That, that's an option. That's not what we're doing. That's an option that's on the table for council. But it, it does not insulate from the state at all. The state's orders are the state's orders.
Okay, yeah, my, my, my concern.
Can't hear you.
Counselor Brawls, you are breaking up. You may want to hang up and call back or either just turn off your video and, uh, that may help out. So Counselor Brawls, if you turn off your video, uh, you may, uh, come across a little bit more clear. So feel free to turn off your video and then, uh, re-ask your question, okay? Turn off your video first, count, there you go. And now try to ask your question.
Can you hear me more clearly?
Yes, we can he- hear you clearer now.
Okay, well, um, what's the right way to say then that the city will enforce a code orange level and rather than a red, than a red color for a period of time?
The way to say it is that the city will not enforce the CDPHE orders unless, uh, businesses, and you could limit the businesses that you're talking about if you want, but unless businesses are exceeding what was the order back when it was orange.
Okay, because you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that this is a short-term spike rather than a long-term spike. And I would hate to put the bit, uh, there's a tremendous cost to these businesses that are, that have to close down and open up again. And I guess I would like to see if we can enforce, not enforce at the red level for a couple of weeks until we get to the next city council meeting on the sixteenth to have more time to study this and to think about it. Is that a possibility?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm still breaking up, I guess. I can't hear you.
Okay, Counsel.
Yes, David, that, that's something that council can discuss and, and they would need to then vote to provide that direction to staff.
Okay, all right. I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Up next, we have Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Mayor, I have a question first for you because I want to make sure I do this in the right order. Is this section right now we're doing is mostly just questions, not so much us stating our ideas yet?
Yeah, what I would like to do is I would like to give all council the opportunity to ask any questions that we have of the, uh, experts that we have access to right now. That way, when we bring it back to council for, uh, comments and suggestions, um, all of the questions would have been answered. That's why I'm trying to make sure that everyone have equal opportunity without being interrupted to ask the questions that they have at this time.
Okay, so part of what I want to talk about, I'll wait then till that next section. Della, I do have a question is what restaurants right now um, ha- are having an outbreak?
So I can't speak for the whole San Luis Valley.
Well, I'm talking about Alamosa.
Alamosa, right now, there is an outbreak, um, at Sonic and if you give me a moment, I can tell you when that.
The Sonic is primarily a drive-through anyway, correct?
Yes.
It's not even a sit-down restaurant, really.
No, it's not a sit-down restaurant.
Okay, so that, at this point, that's the only outbreak?
Um, at restaurants that I'm aware of, yes.
No, sorry, just at restaurants?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all my questions and I'll wait till the next section, uh, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Hensley. Uh, that brings us to, uh, Counsel Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, team. Um, Della, I just, I always appreciate your conversation and your patience with us and our questions that you probably answer sixty times a day. So thank you for that. Um, I did just want to clarify some things and make sure that the data that I felt like I had access to is correct. So there were over eight hundred people tested at the Adam State event that was actually in mid-September. Um, not August, but in mid-September. And of those eight hundred and some people tested, I think there was only one person that tested positive from that event. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and so then with the new community testing that event that happened with sixteen hundred people, I know we've only gotten around sixteen hundred. I think it was a little bit less. We've already gotten some results back, but what you're saying to us is that with, the hope is that more people, because we're doing this wider testing, will be negative and then our two-rate incident rate will go down. And so all of the red numbers that we're talking about, if they were from Alamosa County. So for sure, they're probably from the San Luis Valley, but they may not be. Um, but for those who are, could make our incidence rate go down. So if we could do more community testing and find more people who are also negative, we know we're going to find more positives. We do, because that's the way this virus spreads. Um, but that kind of testing, which we haven't had access to in our communities, could help our incident rates look different. Is that correct?
It wouldn't necessarily help our incidence rate numbers go down.
Okay.
Because incidence is actually occurrence of illness.
Okay.
Uh, what it would impact is the two-week rolling average positivity rate, which is
Thank you.
the percentage of tests that come back positive.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
The more testing you do and the more negatives you identify, the lower your positivity rate.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I had the num- the definitions wrong. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Um, and I think those are my only questions. I was kind of in the same boat as Liz, so I apologize. So thank you, Della, for the answers.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel. Okay, so it looks like, uh, we've given all of the council members a fair opportunity to ask all your questions and we have experts here to answer your questions. So now, Counsel, what I would like for us to do, uh, and I will recognize the ones who are, whose hands are up. I'm going to first let, um, our city attorney go over some of the options that we have before us. And then after he goes over some of the options that we have before us, let's try to think of solutions that we think would be in the best interest of our entire community. Counselor, squeeze out, please.
Okay.
Those are the options. Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, there is, uh, a- a- as the Nova's communication indicated, you can pick anywhere on the spectrum of enforcement from enforce the order as it's written in with us in the level red, uh, to don't do any enforcement at all. So that, that's the spectrum.
So that that's the spectrum that you've got. And within that spectrum, one of the options that I think we've been talking about is to, uh, we can either take enforcement more seriously than we have, or we can continue with the kind of approach to enforcement that we have had throughout this COVID crisis, which is to respond to i- indications that come in and then to educate and as a last resort, take enforcement action of citation into court. I think that this, both the, the city staff and residents and businesses in the city have become comfortable with that kind of enforcement. So I said that I wouldn't give you any opinions, but my opinion, that is a, that is a good approach that I think has been working. If that is the approach that you take, then the question is where on the spectrum of do we enforce everything in the red where we are, or do we, uh, say, you know what? So long as things aren't out of control, so long as restaurants really are not getting above their 25% capacities, we're not going to be interested in, in enforcing the red. Or do you say we're sick and tired of COVID? It's a free-for-all. We're not going to enforce anything. Or or anything else on that, on that spectrum. My sense is that council would be interested in either enforcing the red zone of the dial, the same way that we've been enforcing anything we had in terms of public health orders before that dial came into place as one option. Or tempering that enforcement by saying, you know, gee, really, some of this red stuff makes sense, but in terms of balancing health with, with business survival, we really are not interested in having the city enforce even in, in its, I say fairly gentle way. Businesses, especially restaurants, being in the red versus them continuing to operate like they did in the orange. So I, I think those are the two. And I may be wrong, but my suspicion is those are the two kind of live options that council's really thinking about. But again, that entire spectrum is open.
And Mayor, I, Mayor, if I could jump, I just want to add in addition to Eric's explanation. If it was something where they want, if council wants us to temper that enforcement, do you want us to temper it for all of those classifications you saw on that grid? Or is it just maybe specific classifications such as just the restaurants? So if there is going to be deviation there, to make sure we're clear in the discussion on that item as well. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's a very good point. Thank you, Heather. And then just as a final wrap-up again, and this point was made before, the state can still come in and enforce everything at red if they want to do that. There's nothing that, that we're doing as a city that would change that.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Suezal and Ms. Brooks for giving us those options. I will now turn it back over to council for suggestions. And I know, Council, you're going to be very mindful and thoughtful as we work through this process. Please allow everyone an opportunity to speak before they're interrupted so that we can come to a solution that's going to be in the best interest of our entire community. I am going to list the names in which I will call for cover, comments, and we'll stick to this order as your hands are raised. I have Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Carson. Go ahead, Counselor Hensley.
Thank you. So through this whole thing, obviously, as many people pointed out, it is a challenging situation. And really, no matter which way you go, you're not, there's going to be one side that's feeling that it's not right. And so for me, I'm kind of looking at it from a balanced standpoint. And yes, health and there's no question that COVID is happening. We're having a spike. I think what I come down to is what, when they did the dial of red and they did the dial of orange and all the other colors, is that restaurants in a way were unfairly somehow. And again, I'm not saying it was intentional or anything, but when you go from orange to red, the gyms and the, and the restaurants, restaurants first, and then even gyms a little bit, is the idea, that's where the real drastic change happens. And it's, it's a, it's a real drastic change, especially for the restaurants to have a complete shutdown. So for me, it's that idea of looking at that balance. So my thought process is, and especially since at this point, our restaurants are not having any of the outbreaks. And they haven't, from what I've seen, and I knew Sonic was on the list, but even with Sonic, technically, they're not even really a sit-down restaurant. And when you sit down, it's outside, so it doesn't even meet the criteria of what we're kind of discussing here. So I really would be supportive of the idea of how we've been policing it before on all of the areas, but with the idea of going to orange or policing it as orange if there's a challenge. With that idea that obviously, as Eric said, is if there is something, we then have to enforce it as red because we can't make those, it sounds like we can't make those differences. But I would like to look at everything, because honestly, the only couple of differences that really affect is the restaurants and the gyms between orange and red. So that idea of enforcing orange, but doing it in a way where, how we've been doing it in the past. And that idea of also then really messaging and how important the mask-wearing is, whether you agree with it or not agree with it and things like that, but we need to do what we can do so we can have our small businesses be open. And that there's a fairness to it. And so that to me seems like a balance of fairness. And then obviously, if something suddenly drastically happens, whether it's hospitals or something else, we reevaluate again. So that would be my thought process and I'll end there since I know others want to talk after me.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hensley, for your comments and recommendations. We will go to the next person and that is Counselor Brawls.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Hensley. No, I'm, I was looking exactly like Counselor Hensley is looking at it. Why not let us enforce it at a level orange? And you want temper it towards, temper it towards the restaurants? And give this time to manifest itself. I, I would hate to make a short-term decision. I mean, yeah, make a long-term decision on a short-term event. We don't know how long this spike in COVID is going to be. It might be temporary. It might be months. And I'd like to give it more time. So I, I, I would agree to say let's enforce that or, or, or level orange. Uh, enforce the CB, CDP as I said, at the uh, orange level. Temper it again towards restaurants, like we've done in the past. And give it, give us more time to see how this COVID thing is going to work out. Because you know, we're trying, I agree, I like the word balance. We got to balance everybody, you know, we're, we're responsible for all of Alamosa. Uh, the citizens, the businesses, the schools, the school kids and, uh, and all the citizens. And what can we do to balance uh, that will again protect everybody? And then I, I, I like the idea of educating as leaders in the community, let's, uh, help, let's, let the public know that everybody's responsible to fight this COVID. Uh, it, it's a personal challenge. And we have a personal responsibility to encourage people to wear their masks, to limit the size of gatherings. And if a person has a cough or a fever or a sore throat, to self-quarantine and stay away, stay away from the public. And so, you know, encourage the public to take personal responsibility to fight COVID. I think that's important, too. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brawls. Appreciate your comments and your recommendation. Up next, we're going to have Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grego. And I'm going to ask so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Let's hold off on any motions until every council member has had an opportunity to make their comments and then we'll come back around to that, okay? All right, Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, with Counselor Broyles and Counselor Hensley. Uh, I, I will go one step further and say that we have, again, seen what they've done. And I would say that we, we put for them and enforce it at a level yellow. Now, I know that's drastic, but the thing is, is, is I think even letting move to 50% is, is really good for them, especially the holidays. Because again, they're not the sources of our outbreaks. You know, one of our, our comments online in our, in our chat is, uh, the data from today says, says that 83 of our cases came from ASU. And so, you know, again, we're not, we're not, we shouldn't target these entities. Or, or, you know, and increase the enforcement, you know, at a, at a point where it's we not known. You know, I think the, the outbreak, again, like other people have said, may be short-lived. But it, you know, it is prevalent. It is here. And again, I, I really don't think that these drastic enforcement measures are going to make as big a difference as we would like them to. Cause I don't think anybody's here, anybody here is questioning the validity of, of the virus itself, but the mitigation's tough. So I would say that we enforce it at a yellow because our restaurants have gone above and beyond. And, and I mean, the other businesses that also have, we're out there every day. I see people, other counselors and, and staff out at these places every day. Everybody's doing their part. And I'm guilty of not doing my part at times. People know that. I mean, I've seen people in public. I've been questioned about it. But I have, I've changed that mentality. You know, I do, you know, I do give it the credence it needs and but our businesses and here locally especially, haven't been the culprits. You know, our, we do have to, we have a duty as public officials to educate and inform like Counsel Broyles says. We have to, we have to push that. Everybody's responsible. But hurting individuals or targeting, targeting individual entities or individuals in general is rough. Right now, live, real time, we have a soft purple being enforced in Pueblo and people are being fined a thousand dollars. If you're on the street after 10 o'clock, that's not a rumor or a conspiracy theory. I know that have been fined a thousand dollars. And, and so this has happened since they went to red or since they started stricter enforcement. But, you know, we can't afford that. Somebody can't get fined a thousand dollars. We can't get that drastic. And so I say we step it back a little and reinforce it at a level yellow. That would be my recommendation, but, but I will concur with what council wants. If we can come to some sort of agreement on, on not pushing these crazy policies. I mean, you know, when they're asking you to not gather with your own family in your dining room, and that's what's being asked. There is no ambiguity about that or personal gatherings. It states in there, don't have Thanksgiving dinner. That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Person. Thank you for your suggestions and recommendation. We're going to move on down now to Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grego, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm stuck, right? When we talk about balance and we talk about personal responsibility and we talk about social responsibility and we talk about how all of these things need to come together. I, I was touched by one of the first people who spoke, Amanda, about how sometimes it, it's hard to make a good decision when there are no good decisions to make, right? None of the decisions we make today are going to make our constituents 100% happy. None of the decisions we make today are going to make our community 100% safer. None of the decisions we make today are going to make our businesses 100% more profitable. That's, that's the reality of where we are. And while none of us knew that when we were going to get elected, that's what we got elected for. Um, and so what I, what I think that I've been, I've been struggling with, and I will just tell you that this is my struggle. I 100% support looking at enforcement differently and educating and, and not being completely heavy-handed about the way that we're being, we're doing things enforcement-wise. But I have to tell you, our community is tired. People are angry. People are frustrated. They're sad. They're lonely. They're suicidal. They're drinking more. They're exercising less. They're not doing the things that they did to keep them healthy, safe and happy. And then they go out in the community and they choose not to wear a mask because they're all of those things that are weighing on their heart and soul. And then they're choosing not to be separated from people because they're, they're, all of those things have weighed on their heart and soul and they're tired. And where I struggle with saying we're going to lower our enforcement is that we know that there are people not at, at the level of physical distancing, masking, having the appropriate wind between them, you know, washing their hands enough because they're tired. And so what we need to do is if we choose to not enforce at the red level, which I can 100% hear and agree and support some of those things about why we wouldn't do that. Because our businesses need, need us to not do that. And that, that's 100% real. Um, I also don't want us to forget our movie theater because that would also operating at an orange level of enforcement would also, I think, if I'm reading this correctly, open up our movie theater. We then need to say, if we get a complaint, it needs to be taken seriously by those businesses. I very much agree with what Luke Yoder said earlier, that then we have a responsibility to do this at a different level because our, our incident rate and our two-week positivity rate and all of the things that I've been talking about with that graph across the valley is real. Um, I know some people don't like the numbers. I'm not going to argue with the numbers. You cannot like them, their, their numbers. But that's the data that we're looking at. And so if we're going to compromise, which is what I think we're doing, and I think that's appropriate because I think compromise is a good thing, then we have to take complaints and concern seriously and enforce at that orange level and really expect our businesses and our community members to step up to that challenge because we've done this to help everyone be more successful. And so that would be the ask that I have if we make that shift. Because it, it is people's health. This is a health, life and safety issue. This is not a minor issue. And so I just, I want us to, I want us to weigh that on our hearts, counsel, when we're, when we're making this vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Daniel, for your comments and your recommendation. We'll go to Counselor Grego. And Counselor V Hill, I don't see your hand up yet, but I want to at least make sure that you have an opportunity to speak as well before we move on to any type of motions, okay? So up next, we have Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to first do, Mayor, is I want to thank everybody that took time tonight to come and visit with us, you know. It only tells you that this council and any issue is open to discussion. And sometimes it goes one way, sometimes it goes another way, but there's an openness, a transparency to this council that anybody could come and talk to council. You know, I, I totally respect the governor and his mandates. Like Eric says, you know, that's the law. You know, it's, 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 whatever he says, he's the head of the state. We have to pretty much follow the law. But like I said earlier, to question the numbers, we're not saying we're going against the governor. We're just questioning how they changed that dial. And I think if, if we question the numbers and it takes us like David said, maybe a couple of council meetings or something to come up with the real numbers during that time, I think it's, it's to our benefit to come up with something that businesses and everybody else can continue to operate. And I, I did some checking around the state to find out what other people are doing, just to try to stay open. And I was, I came up with this one deal that Mesa County and the, the chamber, they came up with this five-star variance program. And I know, like Eric says, we don't have a health department, you know. The city doesn't have one. But I think that is something, after reading it and how they put it together and how strict they were and how they enforced it, I think, and I don't know, this would probably have to go back to Dallas Department to see if we could probably put something like this together. You know, where even though things change in the future, we have some kind of a program put together that we can work with to hop out in the future. And I, I don't know if, if that is something that Dallas would, would be able to work with. I agree with everybody. And if we're going to tamper, I think we need to tamper for everybody. Not just restaurants and gyms and what about our churches and all that, you know, I, I think it, if we're going to do it, if we're going to work it where we're going to work with, with the, the whole city and, and county of Alamosa, we need to do it with all of them. So that I, like I said, we need to find out some kind of program out there, put together some kind of answer where, because this thing is going to come back to us again. And we should be ready, you know, to say, okay, we, we, you know, the next two, three weeks, you know, we, we put together some kind of a, a variance program that helps us in the future. And, and I don't know how, how that's going to look, but I would, I would recommend that we do something like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Thank you for your suggestions and recommendations. I appreciate that. We would go down to Counselor V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
And I do appreciate everybody showing up tonight, the day before Thanksgiving to have a, a tough conversation. I talked to a few restaurants today and bar owners. Um, I talked to a few restaurants today and bar owners. And um heard a lot of the same things I heard tonight, you know, personal responsibility and and I heard um. And I was concerned because this, this person said. Uh, well, I I knew, I knew that and it was mentioned tonight a couple of times yet that, let's say we do. We 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 enforce at the orange level. Can the state come down and take away your liquor license or something like that? And and this individual said, yeah, that's a, that's a chance. And they're. They're weighing that within their own ownership team. So. You know, I thought those are tough decisions that they have to make as well. So there is, there is some, some teeth in that. If it, if it, if it goes up the line, see? And then I talked to another uh business owner who said. Uh, they really appreciate us fighting for them and staying at an orange level. But that they probably wouldn't open up their doors again because they realize the. The safety concerns and that, and and they would just feel comfortable. Uh, still doing the to-go orders and the pickup and that. And then I just talked to another restaurant owner right before the meeting. Saying that he's, and I I really, really appreciated his honesty. He says, um. Uh, we're gonna stay closed because it's, it's more about the health of my of my employees and. And if we lose, then we lose out and we we can always rebuild. We can always try to come back. So a lot of different opinions. On on a tough issue. Um. But I I kind of stand where I kind of feel. Uh, and I, I, what do you say? I, I agree a lot with what Ms. Daniel said about if we go to orange. It it, it has to be enforced at that level. And I, and I, I agree too with this too. It's been said tonight a lot. That no one, that that the 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 rate of transmission of this virus is. I think that it's low at a bar or a restaurant. I think that. And I think that they have been treated poorly. They're at the butt end of the stick of this thing. I agree with that. Okay? And I think schools are doing the right thing. I work at a school. Ms. Thomas is at a school. They're doing things very, very safe. Okay, but everybody talks personal responsibility. Well, you, then then we need to step up. People at home need to step up. And then, and then, you know, wear a mask. Keep your, keep uh large gatherings to a minimum. We have that responsibility as leaders to say that. It's not, it's not restaurants, it's not bars, it's us. Look at yourself in the mirror, people. And if I get shit for this, this next week, well then so be it. But look at yourself in the mirror. We are creating the problems for the restaurants and the and the bars. But I'll get off my soapbox. Um, I would be, I would be. Let's go to orange and enforce it orange. But then a question I have for you all, counsel. Is if, what if we get so bad that they move us to purple? What are we gonna do then? You know, something to think about. Um, but um. I would be really, really uh tough. If if people, we say orange, but then they aren't doing their job at orange. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Counselor V Hill. Counselor Daniel, I see your hand is still raised, so I just wanted to make sure. Uh, if you had it up in error or if you have a comment.
Yes, Mayor, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Okay, so um, looks like we have uh Counselor Hensley with a question followed by uh. Uh, Counselor Carson, but before we go to them, because I'm not for sure if you all are ready to start trying to make a motion or not, but. I just wanted to say a few words uh to counsel because what I'm going to do now is turn it back over to you all. To see if we could come and find some type of common ground to do what's just right and fair. For the overall community when it comes to their health and safety and future enforcement. Uh, in regards to the overall community and the community includes the businesses, the peoples, the schools, the first responders. And all of the residents in the city of Alamosa. So as we're thinking about uh the motion that. Uh, we wanna make and what type of uh recommendations we wanna put into that motion, let's keep in mind. Uh, the health and safety of of everyone in our community, okay? So um, now I'm going to turn it over to uh have a couple of hands raised. Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Carson.
So I just like, oh, sorry. I just, I guess I wanted to add is that. I'm hoping um Counselor V Hill and Daniel, when you're saying about policing it, I don't want the police. I don't want it to be like, I'd like it to be at the same level it's been as far as policing in regards to that. It is, if there's complaints or things like that, they go in, there's the education side of it, things like that. I'm not thinking you're meaning that they need to go around and check and make sure everybody's doing. And so that's my question.
Yeah, can I respond to that, Mayor? Is that okay?
Sure, go ahead.
From my perspective, um Counselor Hensley, that is what I meant. I, if we get a complaint or a concern where people are saying this is not being followed to the level of expectation that we had. I that I would like the same education, same enforcement, the things that we've been doing. I don't want people, I don't think we need to go checking, right? No.
Okay, and Counselor V Hill, go ahead. I see you were gonna respond to that question.
I I agree with 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 that too, yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Counselor Hensley, was that all you have? Because Counselor Carson is next. Okay, Counsel Carson.
I heard a lot of you guys, everyone on both sides of this argument, talk tonight about balance. Um, we do have that responsibility. We have that responsibility as the people leading this community. The healthcare provider don't. They have a, they have the responsibility in healthcare and that is important. You have the responsibility to find the best. Now, with that being said, I spoke to several healthcare providers and they all agreed that, you know, they said we needed to find a balance. It isn't as easy as just going to these hardcore restrictions. And with that same thing, I, you know, I'm I'm glad that Counselor V Hill spoke to some of these restaurant owners that are willing to just shut up and make enough. But I spoke to some that can't and that can't even survive at a level orange. So the thing is, is yeah, we do have more responsibility. But when you tell people, you know, look at yourself, I think everybody is. A lot of people do. And it will come to that point in their own terms. You can't be mandated to change who you are. And that's the reality. People, people that say you need to do this, this, this and point the finger are mandating. You don't do that. You come to those places in through growth and through understanding. And so being told what to do and told that you have to do this and that is, it's it's an automatic response to rebel. That's an automatic response. And so what we have to balance. Now, again, I I I appreciate these businesses that can't afford to keep going, but like Ms. Seeger said, local divorce has been an incredible model of that dynamic. That dynamic shift. They've done things that other restaurants couldn't possibly do. And if they're not gonna make it, what about the little guy? You know what I mean? And they're, you know, I'm not saying that they're huge, but locals has kicked butt. They've showed that example. They've made the shift. They've done what they had to to survive. And if they're struggling and they're not gonna make it. Come on, guys. And that's the reality. Again, our restaurants and our businesses aren't spreading this. You know, and and the reality is, you know, data can be manipulated again. And I know people say you don't like the numbers. I'm not just talking. The raw data. You know, people talked about the the cases for hundred thousand earlier. Seventeen thousand people. Hundred and seventy-one cases, that's the raw numbers. Dola and cases. That's a point seven infection rate. The thing is, is we as adults have a responsibility to look at that. I, again, I'm looking at it personally. I've been at children's in the last couple of weeks. I've been in hospitals in and out, and I've taken a personal responsibility. I've been. In and out, these people were, places were sick, and I took responsibility to make sure that I wasn't doing anything irresponsible. And those are terms that I had to come to on my own time, forced to do that. I came to that term. And again, throughout this whole course of things, I wore them for the majority of. Didn't, if someone asked me to, I pleasantly put it on because that's my responsibility. But it is not my responsibility to tell people what to.
Counselor Carson, you're breaking up quite a bit. So just in case you might wanna um take your video off, okay? That's, I just want to let you know you were chopping up quite a bit.
Thank you. Uh, again, it it, you know.
Run off your video.
Enforcement, the enforcement is is something that. That actually have to, people are being um at a lot, but I think enforcing at a yellow level is a. Step that we should look at because our restaurants have been responsible. People in in our business communities have been responsible and penalizing them is not the correct response. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Um, Ms. Brooks, um, you have your hand up and I wanted to make sure that you were able to make some comments. Um, before we go to Counsel Grieo and Counselor Brawls, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. I just wanna mention as I'm listening to the the language, um. When you get closer to a motion and and if that motion, not knowing, you know, what might be put out on the table. But if that motion is to um, say, do enforcement at level orange, that's not the correct wording. Um, so that's what I just wanna make sure from a language perspective. Essentially, the the motion is that we would not be doing enforcement. Um, and that our direction to the businesses is that we would be expecting them. To operate around orange or yellow or green, whatever you wanna pick, but at, I'm just gonna say orange. Um, and that if we get complaints and if that education doesn't work. And the education, I guess, would need to be around whatever level you pick. The only enforcement the city can do is that then the level that the state has placed us in, which at this point is red. So I just wanna, we're making sure that once you get to a point of emotion, if it so happens to be. You know, enforcement at a different level, that's not the correct wording. And so I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. And. Eric, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything else or if that covered it.
Thanks, that covers it. And and I will certainly um suggest modifications i- if. If appropriate to a any motion that gets put on the floor, just in terms of of uh making the language smooth.
Thank you all. Um, I feel like we're getting closer to that motion part. However, since this is a delicate um situation we're in right now, I'm trying to make sure that I'm fair to council to allow them the opportunity. To get their thoughts out there. So we have uh two more hands raised. Uh, looks like three now. Counselor Grieo, Counsel Brawls and Counsel V Hill. And before, I I ask you all, before we make that motion. Let's just make sure that we run it by um our city attorney and city manager to make sure we have the proper wording. So that when we, when it's time for us to vote, we understand what we're voting on, okay? All right, Counselor Grieo.
Uh, I wanna thank Heather for what she just said because those were gonna be my comments. We keep on saying that we're gonna enforce that orange. The mandate is already, the dial is already changed to red. You know, and that's the mandate. We can't go against the mandate, but we can do what exactly how Heather said to do it. But the mandate is red. We can't, we can't say, uh, the governor says red and we're gonna say go orange. No. I think we do what, but how, how Heather is explaining it, but we still have to follow the governor's orders. There's a way of doing it where that's why I questioned that maybe we should look at, we're we're questioning the numbers. We agree. About mandates, but we're questioning the numbers and to go two to three weeks or even a month and look at it. At the numbers again, that will probably buy us some time where this thing is gonna drop and we will be back in orange or maybe even in yellow. But to go over there and to continue to say, well, let's enforce that orange, can't happen. You know, and Eric's been saying it over and over. If we're gonna do, I I I would rather say, hey. We don't, we disagree with the numbers that you changed the dial and we wanna look at those numbers. And and find out what the real numbers are, as Carson was saying, and then come back. And and during that meantime, maybe even put together some kind of variance program, you know, that will will have a solid, something solid to stand on. And I I'd rather do it that way. And I I agree with Heather the way she says to do it, but uh. I think we're, our discussion is that we cannot enforce orange. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. And uh we'll, we'll swing back to uh Ms. Brooks and Mr. Suezal here shortly. Um, as I feel that you all are getting closer to a motion, okay? And we'll make sure that we're clear about what we can do, what can't be done. And we'll make sure that it's clear so that our community. Uh, has a clear guidance because unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation floating around throughout the community that's causing more confusion. Confusion that uh should be out there at this particular time. That's why I'm taking out the time to make sure that we're clear. Everyone understands the direction that we're going. Okay, uh, Counsel Brawls?
Yeah, I was trying to kind of work on wording for a motion. And my question is, you know, can we say that we're making a motion to enforce the CDP at a. Level orange with any enforcement being initiated by calling complaints.
Mr. Suezal. I would suggest that the way to word that motion would be. That we, that you counsel direct staff um not to enforce. The CDPHE uh orders unless the. Particular business that's, that's the subject of the enforcement question is outside the orange guidance.
Okay, I couldn't keep up with you and write that down. But uh. Can you say that again?
Sure. So it would be a motion to direct staff not to enforce the CDPHE orders. Or for that matter, the governor's executive orders. Unless the particular business that's. The subject of the enforcement question. Is operating outside of the orange level.
Okay, can I make that motion?
Counsel Brawls, if you could hold up one moment because I see one more hand raised. And I just wanna make sure that everyone has an opportunity to talk before we entertain a motion, okay? Um, if Counselor V Hill, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question for Eric. Uh, are we on the hook at all for any funding from the state or the feds? If we, if we go this route?
Well, that was a question that we had before and didn't have a satisfactory answer to as to whether CARES funding might be affected. Um, I I don't know whether it is, we don't think it is, but uh because the. The state can't dragoon the city into being its enforcement arm. This is just the city. Directing its police department where the city's priorities lie. Um. And the the issue with respect to uh other state funding, I I know that CDPHE. Provides funding, but I think not to the city. They provide funding to the county health department, which can be cut off. If counties are not following those guidelines, but that would not apply to us. I don't, Heather could correct me, but I don't believe we receive any CDPHE funding.
Thank you. And just, sorry, Heather, just a quick, one more comment and I'll stop. Uh, kinda uh. Respond to to Mr. Carson's comments about uh being strong-handed and being this. And I'm not being strong-handed. I am being a leader. That I was elected to this community and I I think it is my responsibility to. Cause we've been doing, we've been going through this for nine months and it's not working. So that's why I said what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Counselor V Hill. And and Counsel Brawls, I haven't forgotten about you yet, okay? But I just wanna make sure before we uh entertain a motion, everyone has.
No problem.
Okay, so looks like I have Counselor Carson's hand up and Counselor Grieo's hand is up. Counselor Carson, you're up. Counselor Car.
We lost him.
Counselor Carson, we cannot hear you.
I just wanted to.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm cutting in and out. I'm, I may rejoin. Hold on one sec.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and if 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 you're gonna rejoin, I'll go ahead to Counsel Grieo and we'll wait till you rejoin, rejoin, okay?
Just a past comment I was gonna make with my last comment is, I just don't want. Where it says that we're not gonna enforce, I just don't wanna put that business owner. Where the governor comes in and plucks that license because we're not enforcing. You know, and and it says that if we, if they don't do it, regardless of the city doesn't enforce or not. They have that right to come in there and pull those licenses and stuff. So that's why I keep emphasizing, let's, let's buy some time. You know, let's, let's say we're gonna enforce, but let's buy. You know, let's, let's say we're going to enforce, but let's buy some time to say that we're not going to enforce. Those, you're putting those businesses jeopardy where they could come back, pull those licenses. And then, then they're in real big trouble. But that's where I, I don't, I, to say that the city's not going to enforce. And then the governor hears this and then he come over here and says, okay, uh, square peg, we're pulling your license. You know, we're pulling all these license and we tell, you know, I, I'd rather buy some time where we say we're going to respect what you're saying. But we question the numbers. This is some time to, to, uh, maybe these numbers go down and maybe more people get tested and stuff. So I, I, I don't know about the wording of, or how you put it, Eric. We're going to jeopardize a lot of businesses and, and I don't want that, you know? We can't help them. I don't want them to lose their license.
Mr. Suezal, would you please respond to Counsel Giego's, uh, concern so that we can make sure we have clarity, please?
Well, I mean, it's, I think it's a valid concern. So if a business hears the city say, oh, we're not going to enforce unless you go nuts and do something beyond what was allowed under level orange. And they do things that are allowed under level orange and the state decides that the state's going to enforce. They could lose their license. That's a business choice they're going to make. But there is no mechanism for us to buy time with the state. We are in level red. We are. And we are not going to get them to change that. Um, so that, that's not an option that's on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Suezal. Appreciate that clarity. Okay? So looks what we, it looks like, uh, Counselor Carson has rejoined us. It's Counsel Carson followed by Counselor V Hill.
Look, uh, the reality about this is that, um, can you hear me? I'm cutting out.
Breaking up. Can you go to video, take the video off?
You guys just don't want to look at my mug, huh? Okay. Um, the reality is, is that Charlie, you, you have a point. We, we, we miss, do risk that. We're going to risk. But the thing is enforcement, the business reported. Um, so you do have a point. You know, these businesses are, you know, are at risk for, for being reprimanded by the state. But with that being said, with that being said, think, think about that comment and that concern. We're at a time in our existence right now in our history where businesses are afraid of, of the state coming, shutting them down over the authority of their own local municipality because of an order that that state has made that applies to areas not, not settling in the same geographic capacity. And, and, and the, the reality is, is that, um, we have that chance anyway. You know, it was made earlier. The comment was made earlier, can it affect CARES funding? We have very well seen today that Governor Polis will do things on a whim. And yes, as a city, I believe that if we piss him off, he can affect, in effect, pull our CARES funding. That is the chance we are taking. Now, is that a big chance? Of course it is. Money is essential. But the fact is, is like I've said before, when do we say enough? When do we stand up? You know, this is real. It's not going to go anywhere. And again, the mitigation, the mitigation, um, tactics that we take right now may or may not affect that. But we've seen our businesses and our restaurants and, you know, a lot of people in our community. I'm not saying for everybody because we do have people that haven't done anything. But everybody, I think that really is vested in, in any way, has done everything they can to mitigate this, especially at a business level. And so is tightening that noose going to be any better? It's not. And that's why I say I would motion that we enforce at a yellow level because they stand that chance of getting reprimanded anyway. Whether they're not enforcing at an orange or a red at a level, they stand the same chance. And if, and if a, a patron or anybody's going to go in and report them to the state, that's going to happen anyway. Because that's the world we live in today, unfortunately. Now that responsibility lays on us to find that balance. Yes, Charlie, you do have a point and I don't, this, I don't agree that the governor will not pull funding. He can. But again, we have to take these chances sometimes. We have to stand up. There has to be a time when we say enough is enough. And we take our own precautions as a community. We have to, time and time again, the council is responsible and are great leaders for the community. We have to take mitigation measures and education and inform. It's one, but the heavy hand isn't. That's not going to help anything. All it is, causes more division and more frustration and more emotions like the most Counselor Daniels was saying. Because I, I too am in, involved in seeing that. And it is, it's huge. It's affecting our community in ways that we would have never thought. But again, we've gone from a fifteen day, let's flatten the curve to a three month, let's do this, let's do this, and let's do this. And now we're nine months down the road. When does it end? Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Carson, thank you. Okay, up next we have Counsel V Hill and Counsel. Uh, let's just keep in mind, it sounds like you all are getting close to, uh, making a recommendation. Um, so, um, let's keep that in mind and stay focused on, on that task right now instead of getting, uh, sidetracked into our personal feelings and beliefs and things like that. Let's focus on the task at hand right now. Okay? So let's try to see what we can do to get a motion, uh, to where we could find that common ground to do what's right, just and fair for everybody. All right? So Counsel V Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, um, a question I posed to counsel is, um, what do we do if things get really bad and we go to purple?
So-
We start finding people in thousands of dollars like pueblo.
We, I don't think we can answer that tonight.
Yeah, here, here's the thing. We, and, and clarify this if I'm wrong, please, uh, Attorney Suezal and, uh, Ms. Brooks. Uh, looks like every two weeks, uh, the, the, the county health director, uh, will be able to analyze the stage of the, where we are on a dial. So we're going to be dealing with constant change over the next, uh, several months in regards to the status that our community is in. During that time, we're going to have several council meetings in between those changes to where council will have the authority at that time to reevaluate and then come up what we feel is the right solution for the, uh, code or the color that we're in at that particular time. Am I right in saying that, that this is not a permanent, uh, fix? This is something we're dealing with right now for this moment, uh, within this cycle and this stage that we're in on the dial. Am I right in saying that or, or am I incorrect in any way?
I think you're right.
Uh, count, I, and, and I thank you, Counselor Brawls, but I, I, I posed that question to, uh, our city manager and our city attorney so I can make sure that, uh, we have clarity on that.
So, so Mayor, the health department is obviously updating the numbers on a daily basis. I think what Della had indicated is to move to, um, a better category. We have to have a two-week, a minimum of a two-week period of time of having those numbers for the state to be able to even evaluate that. And even at that point, I'm not sure if it's automatic. So, um, but my understanding is the health department, as they get positive tests, um, they're updating their numbers probably on a daily basis. We get weekly updates, um, from the, from the public health department.
Okay, so, um, it, do you all feel that as these changes take place, whatever, uh, motion we put into place right now, if we have to make any adjustments to it, uh, will we have the ability to make changes to it in future meetings?
Yes.
No. I think, you know, we can always amend the motion at any future meeting.
I was kidding. I was kidding, by the way.
I would say, I would say we could do like we just did with this meeting. If we have to have suddenly something come up, then we put it together when that time arises and if it arises.
And Mr. Carson, this is not the time for kidding. Okay? We're trying to be serious in a serious manner. Um, staff and council, I'm trying to make sure we have clarity, uh, so that the whole community won't be misinformed. So this is not a kidding matter for me. Okay? So, uh, Mr. Suezal, could you?
I agree, but it's also not fun to make light of people like you did earlier. So thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Counselor, I mean, Mr. Suezal.
I, I, I'm sorry, um.
The question was, in the future, will council be able to make adjustments to any motion or anything that we put in place tonight if we see that there is a higher risk to the public?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going-
I think I saw the floor, Mr. Mayor. Just one more question for Eric and I'll, and I will stop asking questions, I promise. But, um, are we setting ourselves up for future if someone and, and maybe post-COVID, if someone doesn't like a law or something from the state? Can they just like push us not to enforce it and that? Like, are we setting ourselves up for failure in the future is my question?
Well, we, we always have, uh, discretion as to how we enforce both our own laws, our own ordinances and any state statutes. So, um, that, that's, that's a constant. And, uh, we have developed a culture so that we don't need guidance from council on every little piece of that. And, and you can, I, I know that Chief Anderson has talked with council numerous times in the past about his and his department's approach to policing. And so, um, council can weigh in at any time and, and direct the chief to approach things differently. But I think we've got a very comfortable relationship between council and, uh, and the chief and staff in general on where it is that we focus the city's resources and attention. So that can always change and, and, um, council will respond to pressure, for instance, from citizens who, who decide that we're not doing a good enough job enforcing littering laws or something. Um, that, that always happens. So the answer is, yes, there can be that kind of pressure, but we're not setting ourselves up for it in, in any particular way in this instance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suezal. Okay, so, uh, we have a-
I don't need to interrupt you, but before, uh, David makes a, uh, a motion, can I make a comment and I will shut up after this?
Sure, let, let's do that. Then we'll come back to Counsel Brawls because he's been patiently waiting. Okay?
I guess my question is for Eric, do we even have to make a motion? Should we just leave it the way it is? We have to, uh, go on record, make an emotion that we're going to not enforce or enforce or whatever? Can we just leave it the way it is and ask our, our police department to temper it, you know?
Well, you can leave it the way it is. And the way it is, is, is the way it was when we were in level yellow, uh, and level orange. And that is that city staff will enforce those levels the way we always have. So we will enforce level red the way we always have. And if we get a complaint coming in that, uh, a restaurant is allowing indoor dining, we will go and discuss with them that they shouldn't be doing that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll quiet up.
Welcome. Okay, now it looks like, uh, everyone has had an opportunity to speak. I know Counsel Brawls had a, a motion that he wanted to entertain. And, um, so at this time, I'm going to allow him to, uh, go ahead and, uh, make any comments or whatever he wants to do at this particular time, whether bringing a motion or just a comment. Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, I'd like to try, I'd like to try to word a motion here that everybody can agree on. Uh, in, in more particularly Eric. But, uh, you know, can we make a motion to direct staff not to enforce the CDP order above the level of orange? Unless a particular business is, is expressly non-compliance with the orange mandate?
How about directing staff not to enforce the CDPHE or governor's orders?
Or governor's orders, okay?
Unless, uh, specifically COVID dial red order. Uh, unless a particular business is operating outside of the level orange restrictions.
And Counselor Broyles, you can just say so moved.
Okay, I so moved. That's why-
Thank you, Heather.
A second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second and a council, and we are now, we're, we have a motion. We have a second and now I'm opening up for comments. Counsel Giego had a question. Go ahead.
Is that going, are we going to temper it for everybody or just business, uh, restaurants? Maybe that's a question for David's motion or Eric.
David's motion was for everything.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, raise your hand if you have any further discussion. Okay, uh, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yep. Counselor Giego?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, I think we did a pretty good balance here.
Yeah. Right, so, um, looks like that is the only item that we have on the agenda. But before I close out the meeting, um, I wanted to just follow up with, um, our attorney and our city manager to make sure that I covered everything in this, uh, special meeting tonight. And make sure that we all covered everything.
I think you guys have more than covered everything. Thank you for taking your night out the night before Thanksgiving and, and to everyone from the public as well. Um, it's, it's important to the community and, and you guys don't get paid nearly enough for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks and Mr. Suezal. No, no comment?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And council, I would like to thank you for the time and the energy and staff that you put into this meeting, trying to find that common ground and that balance that's going to benefit our entire community. And for all the, the attendees who called in to let your voices be heard in local, small, uh, communities like ours, you are very important to us and, um, your voices are heard. And council members, sometimes we may, uh, go back and forth with one another. But at the end of the day, guess what? This Alamo City Council is doing what we feel is right, just and fair for all. So thank you all so very much. And I hope and pray that you all have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And if we don't have any other further comments, I will adjourn this meeting. But I just want to give council a few minutes or opportunity to just make any final comments like we normally do in a meeting. If I don't see your hands raised, that means that you're all okay with us adjourning this meeting. If you would like to say something, I'll recognize you to do so at this time. Okay?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. And this meeting is officially adjourned.